All right, we'd like to call the order of the April 14th meeting of the San Carlos City Council Redevelopment Agency. Will everybody please stand? Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, we'll move on to item number two. Are there any requests for changes to the order of the agenda tonight? Counsel? Nope. Staff? No. All right. With that, we'll go to number three. Item number three, which is council communications and announcements. Who'd like to start? Councilmember Brokaw?
Sure. It's actually, and I believe it's on our consent calendar in some fashion, but the B-PAC, the county B-PAC, has been, you know, we went through the projects that were applied for funding and went on tours and then we had a meeting where all the projects were presented to us. San Carlos had submitted a project for sheroes on Cedar Street and then some bike racks at the park and so forth. And that project was approved, made the cut, as it were, with B-PAC. And then I believe C-CAG approved our list, so that means our project was approved for funding. And I thought I saw that someplace in our packet, but I just thought I'd let you know about that process and that we were approved.
That's great.
That's it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Royce.
I have two items, one from the past and one coming up in the future. The past has to do with a little bit of a blinking light that we celebrated on April 2nd. We had a group of parents led by Marie Kelmanson called Safe Routes to School. And on April 2nd, they encouraged all of our elementary schools and our middle schools to walk to school. We had a tremendous response. I personally participated in our Rindell School, which we had about 80 to 85 percent of the kids walking to school, a few car pulling. They got stickers, they got little reflectors, and I've heard that traffic on San Carlos Avenue was significantly reduced that one morning. So really great to show grassroots efforts of a bunch of citizens and parents concerned and interested in getting their kids healthy and walking and out of their cars and so forth. So, super job. You'll hear a lot more about Safe Routes to School in the future. And coming up, about a month later and a day, on May 3rd, our Sister Cities organization is having their 12th annual Taste of Italy. It looks like we may be changing the name next year because we've gone from six restaurants now to eight restaurants. We have a lot of our restaurants on the downtown area and we may be called Taste of San Carlos because...
Blame it. Taste of Italy is so me.
Taste of San Carlos. Anyway, you could go to the website, there's a webpage, nine four oh seven oh dot org, and you could find out more about the event coming up on May 3rd. So, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Ramad.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to acknowledge San Carlos Green, they did some great work up in Vista Park. I think it was not this last weekend, it was weekend before. We've got a couple of test patches, trying to figure out exactly how to put on some native plants, and there was a lot of folks out there having a lot of fun with compost, which sort of speaks to the council job, but that's another story. And I also wanted to congratulate you on your most recent award from Nickelodeon.
Great, thank you very much. Vice Mayor Grisilli.
The only thing I want to report is that a number of us attended the Progress Seminar this weekend in Monterey. There were over 300 participants from the political arena, the business arena, the nonprofit arena. We had a number of very good breakout sessions and it was an excellent time to share experiences of what we each go through each day and gain some more information to help us improve our city in the future.
Thank you. And then I have a couple of things. We, as you'll see from tonight's agenda, if you stick around for some of the items, we had a strategic planning offsite for our last meeting, March 18th. That's where the council gets together and we come up with, sort of revise our three-to-five year goals. We had an opportunity to sort of talk about different working styles and it was a nice full all-day retreat. And for those of you that don't know, this becomes sort of, we come up with a 12-month working plan with milestones, people assigned to it, and it's been a great sort of working tool for council. So we completed that on March 18th. I also attended Meals on Wheels delivery a couple of weeks ago where all the mayors in the peninsula, or several, I should say, get together that are covered by the local Meals on Wheels in Menlo Park. And have had an opportunity to sort of see the operation, see how they prepare the meals. And I got out in San Carlos with some folks and we delivered three meals in town. And it was a really, really great experience. Had an opportunity to connect with a couple of people in town that have a hard time getting out of their houses and sort of getting meals for themselves, although they're still pretty independent. It was just a really heartwarming experience. And it's great to be a part of it and it's a super organization, the Meals on Wheels Organization. I also participated in the Central School, the Auditorium dedication. It's been completely refurbished, for those of you that remember Central from before. It's beautiful, they're up where they used to have the benches, they have now permanent seating and some folks on the, that are involved with it. I think the junior matrons sort of sewed pads for all the seats for the people there. There's air conditioning now. So they've done a fabulous job, combined community funds and school funds and everybody got together and made that happen in time for the Chicken's Ball, which opened yesterday and of which I was a judge. And it was a fun experience. Again, it's one of those great unusual things that happens in San Carlos. It's a lot of fun to watch and be a part of. And that's happening for the next two weekends, the Chicken's Ball at Central School. So I encourage you to take a look at that if you get a chance. And then finally, I attend a chamber meeting. Once a month, they do a government-oriented meeting on a Friday morning. And Assemblymember Iowa Ruskin came and sort of gave an update from his purview of the California Legislature and the issues there and how they might affect business in the chamber in San Carlos. It was an interesting morning. And that is it for council appointments and, excuse me, council communications and announcements. We'll move on to item number four, which is council appointments and presentations. And we have recognition of and proclamations for newly certified green businesses in San Carlos. And we'll let Brian Moore take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. As you probably recall back in January when we had the last edition of this event, the city of San Carlos is one of six cities throughout San Mateo County that's part of the Certified Green Business Pilot. This program is scheduled to go countywide on July 1st. San Carlos is somewhat unique and we had more businesses sign up for this than any city in the county. We've had almost 30 businesses apply for this program to date. In January, we had five businesses certified and tonight I'm going to invite the mayor and the city clerk to join me in a minute and we're going to add seven more to that list. We'll now have three times as many certified businesses as anyone else in the county. I'm also pleased to say that we have five or six more businesses behind this group and the tentative plan is to bring them before you in June or July, again, depending on schedules. And just for the benefit of the audience, these businesses that you'll meet tonight have gone through an extensive process that includes a 12-page self-certifying green checklist, inspections from California Water, PG&E, the SBWMA, and County Health. So they've gone through a lot. In many cases, they've retrofit their businesses, including new lighting, new water fixtures, et cetera. So it is not a free program per se. However, it's a nice partnership between the city, the county, the local utilities and these businesses. So with that, let me ask the mayor and the clerk to join me and we'll introduce you to the next seven green businesses.
Great.
And what we'll do, as we did last time, is we'll bring folks up one by one in the order of the certification. And our first awardee tonight is the Electric Green Showroom and Taylor Smith, the owner, is with us.
Let me turn my mic back to you while I address you, yes. Do I need to be into the mic, Christine, or can I just? Okay, good. Well, what I'd like to do is read the, all the proclamations, read the same way, for each of the businesses. What I'd like to do is read the first proclamation and everybody, please keep in mind, as we call the businesses up one by one after that, that this pertains to all of them, but for the first one, I'll read it. As it says, Electric Green Showroom. Whereas the city of San Carlos has partnered with San Mateo County, PG&E, California Water Service, South Bayside Waste Management Authority, and the Bay Area Quality Management District to bring the Bay Area Green Business Program, which has certified over 1,000 firms as green businesses to date, to firms in San Carlos. And whereas the Green Business Program is a successful partnership of the city, county, local utilities, and agencies that assist, recognizes, and promotes businesses and government agencies that operate voluntarily in a more environmentally responsible way. Whereas to be certified as a green business, participants and their firms must comply with all regulations and meet program standards for conserving resources, preventing pollution, and minimizing waste, and helping businesses improve and implement green practices for their operations. Whereas REI San Carlos has successfully completed the extensive green business checklist, review, and certification process. Oops. Whereas Electronic, Electric Green Showroom, we'll fix that and we'll sign it again, is now a certified green business operating in the city of San Carlos. Now therefore, be proclaimed that by Breathless Mayor of the city of San Carlos, the Electric Green Showroom is hereby committed for being chosen as a San Carlos certified green business dated this 14th day of April 2008. So the... And also have a, from the California Legislature, everybody will also receive from the Assembly a certificate of recognition, this is the Electric Green Showroom, in honor of your commitment to protect the environment and operate your business in an environmentally friendly manner. Congratulations on that. Christine and the aunt, was that another? That's from the county. Let's make sure everybody... Come on, people are putting their work into it. And this is from the county. Board Supervisors, everybody will get at the cow. Goes on the front door and this is also a program as started and by Supervisor Mark Church as well, and it's also certified by the county board supervisor. I'll give you that as well. Again, congratulations, all right.
Okay, our next awardee is Nationwide Floor and Windows and Terry Pebbles, the CFO, is here to accept.
We have a hand here for Nationwide Floor and Windows.
Okay, next up is Harmony Frozen Yogurt, Nick Kaufman, the owner.
Hey! Harmony Frozen Yogurt, which you guys know from, it's a feeling town. I always want the small medium, I don't know if we're small, but I want them to give me a medium, that's my basic... Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have My Gym Children's Fitness Center, Avi Lewis, the manager.
Well, if the last name's Lewis, this can go home with me.
Maybe so, okay.
Thanks for not being here.
All right.
Again, but just again, so we make sure we have on our cameras, it's My Gym...
Children's Fitness Center.
My Gym Children's Fitness Center. Let's have a hand for them.
Okay, next up is Iverson Marketing, Ann Iverson is the owner.
Hey!
Okay, next up is Peachery Restaurante and Tony, the owner, is here. And finally, tonight, we have the Optimal Fitness Center, Brian Schimpf, the owner, is here.
Well, so far it goes something like this, I think you have dinner, food, dairy, and eat something at Harmony and then bring your kids to the My Gym Fitness Center and you head down to Optimal Fitness Center. With that, we come to the item number five, which is the public comment portion of the evening. And this is persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If there are more than five individuals wishing to speak during public comment, the mayor will draw a five-speaker card from those submitted to speak during this time. I think we may be just at five, so let's take a look. First, we have Natasha Bergson-Michelson. Am I close? All right, you can correct me when you get up there. How's that?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I am Natasha Bergson-Michelson. I'm a resident of San Carlos and I'm here tonight to talk in favor of the proposal for composting, curbside composting and food scrap composting. And I just, we've been composting at home in our backyard since about November, which marks about a year after the time at which we decided that we wanted to start composting. And it took us a really long time, just, it seems like little things, but we had to order the composting bin from Recycle Works and we had to order the worms and the first worms came dead and we had to replace the worms. And it was this very long process that in the end cost about $80 for my family to undertake, which as I understand it, would really spread out very well, would get me several months of curbside composting recycling. So I really encourage us as a city to undertake this because as easy as our county has made it so far to undertake curbside recycling or composting, I think we could make it much simpler. And for families like mine who have a lot of places to go, another roadblock was they have all these wonderful workshops. I work during the week, I run around with kids on the weekend, I have a three-year-old and it's very, very difficult to find the time just to go to a workshop. So I think that we could really get a lot more people on board very, very quickly by coming up with a newer and easier option. Also, really quickly, you got a letter actually from my son a couple of weeks ago talking about his feelings about curbside composting. And I was very surprised when he told me he wanted to write the letter, that he chose to ride by the economic benefit to the city in terms of bringing new families in and adding to our revenue, driving up home prices. It was not the argument I'd expected him to take. But I'd actually like to take a second to back him up because the moment we decided to move to San Carlos was when I walked into City Hall and saw the play spaces for children and I immediately knew that this was a city where I could raise my family and it would be made easy for me. And I thought, I think that my son's argument is an interesting one about how parents feel and how we, how we want the place we can raise our children and it's so exciting to see everything that San Carlos Green is doing. Am I done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I actually have more than five tonight for public comment. We have a long agenda, so there are four more on just curbside compost pickup. So I don't know if one of you wants to have somebody else speak for you, but why don't we have Ellis Verosub come up next? And we may have to reduce... What we can do to try to get everybody, an interest to speak, maybe we can try to keep it to like a minute and a half on this subject so we can get all of the speakers on this subject.
Okay, I'll go as quickly as possible. Thank you very much. My name is Ellis Verosub. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my wife Barbara, who's also in the audience. I came here, I'm associated with San Carlos Green. We moved to San Carlos, actually exactly one year ago yesterday. We live up on Tamarack. We came from San Francisco. We love the community and we've had a great time in our year here so far. One of the things that, one of the very few things that bothered us when we moved, however, was the lack of the curbside composting program. We had one up in San Francisco, we participated in it extensively. And one of the things we realized is we haven't really changed our lifestyle much since moving to San Carlos in terms of how much we consume, but our trash is actually nearly three times as much on a weekly basis as it used to be in the city. The vast majority of that is related to kitchen scraps that were, used to be taken by the curbside composting program in San Francisco. So we think in terms of garbage reduction and in terms of sort of green values and environmental values, this is really a program that cannot be beat. One other thing I wanted to mention is when I said I was coming here tonight, some of my coworkers, I have one who lives in Cupertino, I also have a friend who lives in Oakland, and they all start talking about, oh yeah, we have all, we have those programs too, they're great. So I would really like to encourage the city of San Carlos to adopt such a program. I think it would really go a long way towards, you know, increasing the environmental impact of the city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Michelle McKenzie. And the next speaker, just so you can come near the front of the room, will be Lori Lowe.
Hi, I'm Michelle McKenzie, I'm a resident of San Carlos and I'm here to talk about the composting of food scraps. We compost at my house. We've been doing it for about a year and the first week that we started, we saw about a 50% reduction in our garbage. We went from two cans a week of garbage to one, just like that overnight. But as a home composter, you still can't compost certain things like meat and dairy and grains, so this would be a beneficial program to me. In addition, I think it'd be a beneficial program to all the people in San Carlos, many of whom probably do not compost at home either because it's too difficult, too time-consuming, they lack space, they lack knowledge. This is something that is so easy, all you have to do is throw your food scraps in a separate garbage can, haul it to the curb, and you're done. You've done your green deed. And I think sitting, that sitting here tonight, I heard so many great things about how San Carlos is really trying to take the lead environmentally and I think this would be just another feather in its cap.
Thank you very much. Lori Lowe.
Thanks for having us today. I'm Lori Lowe and I'm a resident of San Carlos, I live in Arroyo. And since most of my colleagues have said it all, I strongly support the curbside composting program, so.
Great, thank you very much. Nancy Nagel.
Good evening, councilmembers and public. I'm also here to speak in favor of the food scrap composting, mostly in the sense of reducing waste, that we as a culture, we were used to throwing out and we, landfills are filling up, we need to figure out how to reduce our waste and as people have said, this really goes a long way toward it. It will spread it a lot more widely through the community, as opposed to where people have to show so much initiative to do their own composting, this will make it a lot easier. And that's, that's about it. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Gail Gose.
Hello, I'm, just wanted to make a statement. You're currently rewriting the general plan and I'm attending a citizens academy right now, you may know what it is, run by San Mateo County. And our last meeting was at San Mateo Medical Center. And they have drafted a statement about help, that they're asking all of us to try to get our cities to add to any new general plan that we're writing up. And so I just wanted to ask if you'd be open to that idea. They haven't given us the exact wording yet, but I just wanted to put in a few words tonight. So can I bring it to the council when we get it?
You know, I would just direct you to break the staff's attention.
Break the staff, okay.
Great, thank you very much. And last flip I have for public comment is Nick Kaufman.
Hello, councilmembers, thank you for hearing me. My name is Nick Kaufman. My wife and I own Harmony Yogurt here in San Carlos and thank you for the great award tomorrow. I just wanted to say a couple of words tonight about competition in downtown San Carlos as it relates to all businesses and especially as it relates to my business, Harmony Frozen Yogurt. As many of you know, the national chain, a franchisee of the national chain, Red Mango, is moving into a space about 100 feet away from where we operate right now. This national chain operates pretty much precisely the exact same business model as we do. And so they have obviously targeted us to come in and take over this market and then, you know, let the chips fall where it may. While I am very much a proponent of competition and I very much believe in our product and I think that we will eventually win any competitive issue, I am concerned though about what's going to happen in the meantime in terms of obviously dividing up the market and as it relates to other businesses who need to face a national chain that wants to come in, target their business, and then take over. We have a lease that ends in a year and a half and I don't think that Red Mango, once they do come in, is going to go away, given their financial backing and some of their tactics in the past. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention and then maybe suggest a possible council review of national chains that do want to come into San Carlos and disrupt what you call a local business. Not sure if I put that correctly, but I appreciate you hearing me.
Great, thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to item number six, which is the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve items F through J.
I'm sorry, F through J?
Yes.
Any other counsel?
I just had a question, Mr. Mayor. This is actually to the city attorney. Item C is for approval of minutes before I was on city council. Don't know if I can vote for it.
You can, however, since you didn't attend the meeting, my suggestion is you just abstain on that one item.
Understood.
So noted.
So, Mr. Mayor, I will move for approval of...
I'm sorry, one second. Before you do that, is anybody from the staff or public request an item to be removed from council, from consent? Okay, excuse me.
So, Mr. Mayor, I will move for the approval of consent calendar items 6A, B, C, D, E, K, L, M, and N, and note my abstention from item 6C.
One second, Paul. Christine?
Councilmember Ramad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Brokaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. So those items 6F through J will be moved to the end of the agenda tonight. I know Vice Mayor Grisilli will remember that, but I'm making notes. And with that brings us to item number seven, reports to council. And our first item is 7A, update on the red light camera project.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis, members of the city council. Greg Roth is police chief. As you know, the city went forward with the, the city council decided to, elected to go forward with a red light camera installation in San Carlos and to go with really one camera at that time. So right now I just wanted to do is just update you on where we're at with that project and just to kind of, our promise to keep you posted on where we are. Really, the best way to update you is in three areas. The first is site selection, have we selected a site? If so, where and why? Second being installation, where are we at with getting the camera up and rolling? And then the third thing is where are we at with actually administering that kind of a program in this community? So in terms of site selection, we did a few things to help determine really where the best site for the camera would be. The first thing we did is we had Red Flex survey what we believe to be busiest intersections. I worked with the city engineer, we selected some intersections. Obviously, they don't have the staff time to survey every intersection in the community, so we just picked ones that were busy and or representative of the other intersections. So we did that. Once we got the results of that, and you have the results in your staff report, we identified and looked at really what the top intersections were in terms of violation rates. And as you can see, they were eastbound Holly at Industrial and they were northbound El Camino at San Carlos Avenue. Both of those approaches appeared to stand out considerably higher than any of the other ones being surveyed. The second, the next thing that we did once we had that is we looked at the accident history for the major intersections in the community. And we did some analysis of the accidents, you have those in the staff report, but we also were able to do some more detailed analysis of the accidents at both San Carlos Avenue and El Camino and at Holly and Industrial. And we found some interesting things with respect to the accident history at those two particular intersections. First of all, there were really more accidents at Holly and Industrial, but the accidents at San Carlos Avenue and El Camino in that, in that area, the primary collision factor for the accidents at the avenue and El Camino was the actual red light violation itself. Percentage-wise and number-wise, they had a much higher, or higher rate of accidents as a result of running a red light. So that was the analysis of the intersections and how we looked at those intersections. Based on that, staff believes that the best location would be northbound El Camino at San Carlos Avenue for several reasons. First of all, the violation count, at least for that intersection, for straight through running the red light, is the highest at that location than in any of the other surveyed intersections. The second reason is that most of the, is that that intersection, the result of collision at that intersections, are more likely to be a red light violation than... at that intersections, are more likely to be a red light violation than it were at the other surveyed intersections. And another issue with San Carlos Avenue and El Camino, as you know, is the pedestrian traffic and the bicycle traffic crossing across the intersection. And the way it gets used from Caltrain Depot up to San Carlos Avenue and back and forth, there's an enormous amount of pedestrian traffic across that intersection. And that's not the case with the other intersections in town. And so we feel strongly that there's a duty to protect bicyclists and pedestrians at that rate. Any right angle collision, even involving two vehicles, is a serious collision. But I'm sure we all agree, a right angle collision between a car and a pedestrian is going to be much worse. And so for those reasons, we believe that that is the best site to select right now. We also took, again, we talked about the concept of installation. There's good news and bad news with respect to installation. The bad news has been that at a Caltrans intersection, and that is a Caltrans intersection, it is, it's just almost impossible to get Caltrans to sign off on a red light camera installation. However, there's been some really good developments in that area recently. And finally, the cities of Menlo Park, Burlingame, and Daly City are about to break ground on Caltrans-controlled intersections for a red light camera project. Most of the cameras that you've seen up in town are not controlled by, at a Caltrans intersection, they're city-owned intersections. So we're going to benefit from a lot of the trailblazing done by Burlingame, Daly City, and Menlo Park. And so I want to publicly thank them while I'm here for doing that work in advance for us. It will be a lot easier for us to go ahead and go up online at a Caltrans intersection as a result of their work. And then the last update is in terms of, once we get this program here, how are we going to administer it? The city council has approved in the prior staff report $30,000 for staff time associated with administering that program. We're working with the city attorney's office right now and staff to take a look at other options that might be less expensive than that, such as joining in with another city to actually administer the program. And there's some technicalities associated with that, and so we're currently reviewing the law on that. And that's a direction where we may or may not go. We may keep it in-house, but I think it's possible to do it for less, as long as we're within the law on that. So those are, that's pretty much the update I have, and I'm ready for any questions you might have.
Please, Councilmember Brokaw.
I have just one question. I have heard about an article that came out in a motorcycle magazine about a fellow who received a red light citation from a picture being taken and contested it because it came, the ticket actually came from an outfit in Arizona sending the ticket to the person. And that was contested in court, and the fellow won because the ticket didn't come from the jurisdiction, but came from this company in Arizona. So I was just curious if you know anything about that?
I don't know, I don't know anything about that case. I can tell you a few things. The outfit in Arizona, they don't issue ticket, they won't issue tickets for us. We will be the issuing agency. We will decide who gets cited and when they get cited. So those tickets will come from this city, not from the company. And also, I can tell you that there's been a lot of work in this county done by people who have violated the red lights and their attorneys to find ways to get around these red light citations in court. And to date, departments have been very successful in defending righteous red light violations in court.
Thank you.
Please, Councilmember Lewis?
Well, Greg, when we get our first camera in town, I think people, between news media and people who are getting tickets, will find out very quickly that we have one there. When we do install it, my recommendation would be, if this makes sense to you, is just look at some flexibility on brackets or wiring, because this will be northbound El Camino. You have an approaching camera, and you have an exiting camera. And, you know, every six months, if we could, with extra wiring or brackets, could tilt the cameras, and all of a sudden, the going camera becomes the approaching camera. Exactly, all of a sudden, we're catching southbound. Or flipping it 90 degrees, we could catch people eastbound on San Carlos Avenue turning in front of the train station. So again, I don't know what the mechanics are, but if you could, with the company, make sure you look at, if there's any flexibility, a little additional cost in front in installation would allow us additional capability for this unit, I think would greatly be appreciated.
Okay, thank you. I will ask them about that.
That's one, Ahmad?
Yes, sir.
Well, Chief, thank you very much for that update. We do have one public comment speaker on that that I'll allow to come up now and make a brief comment. But thank you very much, Chief, for the update and report. Kabi Soba.
As I look around the room, I see people who are doing this on the corner of Holly and El Camino. I don't know where this man was looking to do his survey, but it's like a madhouse if I want to cross Holly to go across El Camino, if I'm on Holly going to El Camino. People do not stop. They have a red light. I have been forced more times than I can tell you to stop and let the people coming from San Carlos Avenue, two lanes making rights. There are buses, there are tractor trailers who do not stop at that light. I think that's a more important light to have a red light, camera light than it is on San Carlos Avenue. You have one lane of people crossing to the depot. They don't go on the other side. You have two lanes coming from San Carlos Avenue where they go on to El Camino, and they take two lanes right onto Holly. I don't think anyone has adjudged this one. I don't think, even when you go on Industrial, it's not as bad as this one on Holly. I invite any one of you to stop and watch the cars go through this red light. I have called the police department. I have written letters. I've never gotten any kind of acknowledgement that this is a problem, and it is a big problem. And it's, in fact, one policeman said they're only there maybe at night. It's in the morning. I used to go to work at 6:30. I wait in line because the people coming from San Carlos Avenue onto Holly and out do not stop. It is really a dangerous intersection, and I think you people should look at it and have it surveyed before you ever give an okay on San Carlos Avenue. Okay?
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to item 7B, which is a report on the 10-year city staffing program service levels.
Well, county, if I needed to do more than just push a button, I was in trouble. At our strategic planning session, we talked about the 10-year historic staffing level for the city of San Carlos, and we thought it was important to bring back some data to the council with respect, with respect to what the city's historic staffing level has been.
This is why I played acoustic guitar and not electric growing up.
I'll be mobile here in a moment. That'll be dangerous, so I can pace back and forth. Basic concept and the method for presenting this report tonight is to talk about our staffing levels and to compare our staffing levels with some comparable cities. We wanted to talk about, as you will see, why the city has fewer FTEs than many of our surrounding communities. And what you're going to see is, it's related to money. It's not a surprise to anyone. Again, the historic staffing levels, you're going to see that less than 100 FTEs, full-time employees, 10, 11, 12 years ago, peaking at 125, now down to about 113. We've frozen additional positions. And then we wanted to talk, because it's more about programs, of course, than it is about the employees or the number of employees. And as you might expect, as new employees came onboard, they came onboard for a reason. And we want to talk about some of the new programs that were implemented with those new employees. The Examiner actually did a story that kind of prompted this analysis. And please don't think of this as any kind of a benchmark analysis. We haven't reviewed in detail the, and are not presenting tonight in detail the budgets of other cities. But we have taken a look at certain cities in the area, in San Mateo County and a couple in Santa Clara County, that are close in size to the city of San Carlos, and looked at their full-time employee staffing levels. As you can see from the cities that were surveyed there, the number of employees that the city of San Carlos has are dramatically fewer than what many of the other cities that are of similar size in the area might represent. The map that we've included here is a map of San Mateo County. And what we wanted to do is talk a little bit, well, you know, why is it that we have fewer employees? Well, the bottom line is we have less money than some of the other cities have. And so we're not able to provide the staffing support levels that those other cities are. And we thought it would be important for the city council and for the community to understand the kinds of revenue that other cities are generating and why it is that other cities our size have additional revenues. The map that you see there is San Mateo County. The cities in red are cities that have adopted a utility users' tax. In addition to a utility users' tax, though, many of the cities in the county have adopted other revenue measures that are geared towards public safety primarily. Belmont and Foster City have extra property tax from what is achieved here in the city of San Carlos. This is a work in progress. If I had to do this map today, I would remove the city of Brisbane. They do indeed have a landscape and lighting district, but it's a very small landscape and lighting district. And so I don't know that I would keep that up there as a city with an additional tax if I were to do the map again today. The areas in green are cities that have a little different economy. And you'll find that in those cities, there is a revenue stream, other than property and, other than property tax is one of their primary sources of revenue. Primarily, you can think in terms of Burlingame and Half Moon Bay, for example, because of the TOT, all of the hotels that are located. The transient occupancy tax generates a large revenue stream for those respective cities. We've then included Colma, South San Francisco, and San Mateo as examples of cities that have very strong economic bases in retail, large shopping centers in proportion to the size of those cities, or auto malls. To give you ideas of cities that have developed a very strong economic development engine that generate a revenue stream that allows the support of additional staffing levels. We being San Carlos and Woodside is being two cities that don't fit into either one of those categories. You look at the property tax rate for the cities in San Mateo County, you'll see that San Carlos, in terms of the share of the property tax that we get from the dollar, it's 13.2% of the dollar. We've represented historically it's 11%, and that is accurate because after the ERAF, Educational Augmentation Fund, adjustment, it drops to 11%. But you can see that in San Carlos, we actually get a much smaller portion of the property tax dollar than do some of the other comparable cities, ranging from 33% down to Portola Valley Revenue stream isn't there to support the staffing levels, but there was growth in our economy in the early part of this decade. And that allowed the city to increase its staffing levels from 104 in 1998 up to 125 in 2002 and 2004. As you can see, we've been dwindling back or cutting back as we've had to in terms of making cuts and budget reductions in recent years. Our current budget document would indicate we are at 113.8. We've indicated on the chart, 111, again, that's, it's a work in progress. There's a budget being prepared that will be submitted to you on the 28th that will have that number adjusted, probably downward as we're looking at the budget document today. The 113.8, as I've represented to you before, we've actually, right now, as we stand here today, are at about 108 positions because we've frozen five. We've had another that we know was coming vacant, which would bring us down a little bit further than that. But in the new budget, we are also looking at bringing a couple of positions from contract into the city, such as a planning department position and public work department positions that will potentially raise this number up to 111. And as we've indicated in the staff report, that's an important factor because, as we've discussed before, there has been shifts over time. When you go back and look at 10 years, and it's, you know, documented to some degree in budget documents that have been presented to city councils over the years, every year or two, we do make adjustments. We reorganize some. We've shifted some employees out. We've contracted for some services, and we've brought some services in-house. Certainly, I think in the overall scope of things, it's generally a wash in terms of the full-time employees that we have. If you're going to do a more thorough analysis of this, you might look at, and Randy and I were talking about this earlier today, full-time equivalencies and try to determine what portion of your city service level might be provided through contract arrangements that could be divvied up in terms of full-time equivalencies. And we've talked before with regard to dispatch, for example. In last year, we contracted on for that service. And so there were three or four positions that we ended up losing. Went from our FTE count to someone else, another city. Actually, it went to Menlo Park, one of the other cities that was on the list. That dropped our FTE level. But at the same time, as we've talked about, we brought IT functions into the city that we used to contract for. We're bringing planning positions into the city. We brought finance positions into the city, and we brought public works positions into the city, all of which were contracted before, that now are going to be reflected or have been reflected in the FTE levels, the employee levels that are currently represented on this chart. And so I think it's entirely accurate to look at that chart and say that, you know, yes, we have grown from the 1998 levels, but we've also pared back and are continuing to pare back because of the budget reductions that we've, that we've seen. But the bottom line, the point of all this, of course, is to talk about programs and service levels. It's not about the number of employees that are working for the city. It's about the programs and services that we're, that we're able to provide. When we went from 104 employees up to 124 employees or 125, we did that for a reason. And we did that to add programs, to add services. We added facilities, and those facilities needed staff support in order to provide the services that those facilities were intended for. In addition to that, there were a number of programs that were imposed upon the city, a number of mandates that have been passed down by state or federal legislation. And in the staff report, and I certainly won't read through all of these, but there was a series of programs and additions. I've asked staff to just do a quick analysis and tell me things that they were aware of. So it's not necessarily a thorough analysis of this. But one thing that just jumps out, you know, is obviously the world is changing in terms of IT support and how we've had to keep up with that and have staff onboard to help us manage the computers, even manage the phone systems that we have. The GASP reporting requirements, GASP 34 through 45. 45 is the one that we're talking about today. It's the accounting requirements for the retiree medical function that we must do to meet our accounting obligations of the GASP 45 law. But GASP, you know, 34 through 45 would really be a more accurate representation of the additional accounting requirements that are being imposed upon cities. Everything from doing an analysis of our streets and including our infrastructure and reporting the value of those within our accounting and budget documents. Those are things that 10 years ago, 15 years ago, were not required by cities. And cities didn't do it. And I've been in the profession long enough to know that before those requirements were imposed upon cities, they were not being tracked, especially by smaller cities. Today, it's the law. And so we've had to pick up those kinds of obligations. City Clerk E. Pack, it's the passport program is something that we, you currently can pick up a passport at City Hall as well as at the post office. The televising of city council meetings. Community development, a number of mandated programs relating to storm drainage and making sure that contaminants do not reach the bay. Residential design review here, an apartment inspection program. As you know, we've adopted a new economic development plan. We formed an economic development partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Advisory Commission. We're undertaking a comprehensive rewrite of the city's general plan. In police, child safety seat installations, additional DUI checkpoints, seatbelt checkpoints, a pharmaceutical drop box that's here at City Hall, the community emergency response The fire department also responded to the request to give us an idea as to the kinds of programs that they've been asked to take on in the last couple of years, including area inspections in the urban wildland interface, as well as the search program that was referenced earlier in the, in the police department. And in parks and recreation, farmers markets, Parks and Recreation Foundation, Week of the Family, the youth center, a whole new facility that needed to be staffed with additional programming provided therein, the library, the maintenance responsibilities while they're within the city, the building community task force, the mayor's bike ride for Pass Christian, Pass Christian Committee, traffic circles that need to be maintained, a number of new enhanced programming for adults and youth, and of course, the Fields Project, which is also on the agenda for tonight. A summary of some of the programs that have come onboard with the additional staffing personnel that the city picked up four or five years ago. And really, the message tonight is as we're preparing the budget, we want... And really, the message tonight is, as we're preparing the budget, we want the city council to understand, we want the community to understand, that as we make adjustments in the staffing responsibilities and the staffing limitations of the city, we're going to have to go back, not necessarily to these programs, but we're going to have to go back to programs that are being provided in the community and take a serious look as to whether or not we can continue to provide everything that we have been providing up to this date. We simply can't do it with fewer personnel than what we've had in the past. And there are some things, and I know the fields issue is on tonight, and we'll talk about that in depth, but that's one example of where we would be proposing to use restricted money, money that is only can be used for a physical capital facility. It's dedicated for that specific purpose. It's, in some cases, it's from park dedication fees, in some cases, it's from the, in one case, it's from the Palo Alto Medical Foundation in terms of a contribution to the city. By looking at that project, though, and not having to, you know, if that project were approved, not having to mow the fields, not having to fertilize the fields, not having to do as much work in terms of the annual maintenance of that field, might allow us, might allow us to reduce a maintenance person in that department. Now, it won't be a person that will be lost to the city in terms of its employment staffing level. And the reason I can say that affirmatively, I think, without being mistaken, is that we know about mandated programs that are coming down the pike. We know, for example, that there are going to be additional requirements for us in terms of the storm drainage management system and in terms of the wastewater treatment system that will require additional maintenance personnel in order to continue to meet imposed regulations that are coming both from the state and federal level. And so what that project, it's just one example, might allow us to do is to move one employee from a parts maintenance capacity into a storm drainage or wastewater treatment system capacity. And it's those kinds of efficiencies that we're looking for with all of the things that we're doing at City Hall to try and ensure that our operational expenses are being represented and cost allocated to the funds that we can charge them appropriately to and still live within our means. I mean, the bottom line here is that we don't want to become, there are cities that have gone bankrupt. There is another city in the Bay Area that is looking at that as a real possibility, and we're not close to there. We're living within our means, and the way that we've been doing that is paring back, coming up with additional efficiencies, reorganizing, and now we're going to be looking at reducing services and additional service levels with the budget that we're about to present to you in a couple of weeks. There's additional information within the staff report. I varied and strayed a little bit in terms of the PowerPoint presentation, but I wanted to touch a little bit upon the revenue that the various cities around us have, because that's the market that we're in, both in terms of what the community and what the people in this community expect in terms of service levels, as well as what we pay for employees, in all honesty. With that, I would be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you for that report. I know these are tough things to sort of get your arms around, and staff's doing a good job at bringing a lot of stuff into the report. From council, comments, questions? Councilmember Gokat?
Don't start with me.
Councilwoman Royce?
Just, I'm just going to take one, because I do want to get on to some of the other items on the agenda, but I do want to share with the public and council here, some of this started about a month and a half ago, when I said I was new, I really need to understand what I called F T E was full-time equivalency, and I want to share that Mark and Jeff and their team have done a lot of work. I've worked together with them, and when we get into budget, I feel very well-prepared. Mark and I opened our eyes, I think Mark learned a handful of things. I learned a tremendous amounts of things, and I think I'll be prepared to give you a lot of the history of where we've been, where we are now with our headcount, in addition, looking at revenue growth, looking at the mix of costs, looking at all sorts of components that drives the budget when it relates to people and the cost of people, since that is about eighty-five percent of our cost of the general fund. So in summary, thanks for all the work. You've done a lot of work on this, but I feel really good on what we will be able to share when the budget comes along. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll simply echo what Councilman Royce said, that I do appreciate all the hard work you've done to put this together. We're going to have a very interesting meeting come April twenty-eighth, and it's going to be an interesting time when we really take a look at the programs and what we're providing for city services and what may have to go. One of the things that we've seen in our mission statement is that we want to run our city in an economically sustainable fashion, and we're going to do that, and I'm, you know, I'll speak for myself, but I believe that's the sentiment of the council, that we're going to be extremely focused on that issue, and I thank you for all the work you've done.
Councilwoman Gokat?
I first had a question and then just a comment or two, and that is, when we were reading the report on page two, towards the bottom, it goes through, starting with number one, two, three, and gives descriptions of creation or elimination of different positions and so forth. Is that then reflective of the time period? Are we to read that this, these are the things that have happened since ninety-seven, ninety-eight?
I believe that's correct, yes. I mean, I think most of those things, if not all of those things, have happened within that timeframe. I could be mistaken, but that's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And I should say that I did meet with Councilmember Royce, and we've talked over this issue a little bit. I'm in strong agreement with Councilmember Royce that really what we should be looking at here is what he terms full-time equivalent. As I go through this list, and if I take that approach, then there are a number of places where I just see it as a wash. For instance, the number seven about contracting public works and finance director and dispatcher positions. To me, I see that almost as a wash. I realize with the dispatch, there's a little bit less of a wash, but, you know, if we're going to contract for a public works director or actually have a public works director or finance director, it's still a person who needs to work for you, whether you're contracting or hiring them as an employee.
I think that's correct. I think the point that I would make, though, is that what we're doing is, even with the reduced numbers that you're seeing in terms of the full-time employees, those in reduced numbers reflect positions for the public works director and for the assistant public works director and for the two planning positions that we're bringing in, the planning manager that we're bringing in, the two new I T positions that we brought in. And so even the reduced number of F T Es already reflect contract positions that have been brought into the city. And so it's a real reduction in terms of equivalencies or employees. I don't think there can be any mistake about that. I do think that there has been movement both ways, and dispatch is a movement where we reduce the F T E, but contract it out. But we've got any number of others where the opposite is still, is the truth, and the numbers are still decreasing.
I guess when I, you know, when I go through this, then items one through nine, actually, then also picking up items one, one and two were the other things that we're considering, I see a net gain of seven, if you will, of full-time equivalence, which would put us at about, if we go from the ninety-seven, ninety-eight number, which was one oh four, then we'd be at about one eleven, just a little bit below what we're budgeted for right now, but a little bit above what the city manager is saying we might be after going through budget and.
I do think that we probably do have an increase from nineteen ninety-seven in terms of staffing levels.
Right. Which is, you know, it's not unreasonable. I'm just pointing out how I'm reading the report and how I look at it. The other comment I would make is, just looking at, I appreciate picking cities that are of similar population to us to, you know, sort of give a benchmark. The thing that's, I find challenging is, like you say, you can't get into, this report doesn't then go into their budgets and so forth. And I know I was talking to Councilmember Baylock from Burlingame at a dinner recently, and she was actually challenging her city manager about the fact that their budget is quite a bit higher number than ours is. But then it was pointed out to her, well, they have departments that we don't have. And I think one of them, for instance, was they have their own water department. So, you know, when you start looking at some of the departments that some of these other cities have, it would then explain why they have, you know, two hundred and fifty employees where we only have one hundred and thirteen. The last comment that I would make, that other than looking, I would like to see this refined, the approach, to where it is more of an equivalency instead of full-time employee, just full-time equivalency. But the other thing that would be interesting to look at is, you know, if we have, and I'm just going to use as an example some different positions, and no insults to anybody, but let's say Burlingame had two hundred and fifty employees, and they, you know, fifty of those are for a janitor at each building that they might have, and, you know, let's say they had fifty buildings, and each building had its own janitor. Versus in San Carlos, we've got same fifty buildings, but we do that with three janitors. Those are lower-tier positions. Now, let's look at if San Carlos had, and again, no offense to anybody, but let's say, for instance, we had fifteen high-level department heads all earning six figures versus maybe Burlingame has ten high-level department heads earning six figures. You're going to see a far different budget, and those are some things that would be interesting to also look at.
And one of the things that we might, one of the things that we may want to look at, frankly, is, you had the Harvey Rose Accounting Firm look at something like that for an issue several years ago. I mean, that kind of analysis can be done. I don't know that you, that city staff would want to do that kind of a thorough analysis of every other city in San Mateo County or even those six to try to compare it to us. We can certainly do a broad brush and determine, well, do they have this department or not? We've already corrected for fire departments, for example. But certainly, I would expect, and there's something wrong, if those cities that have a third more employees or double the number, if they don't have extra departments or extra services, there's something wrong. You know, I would totally expect that to be the case.
And just the closing comment, Mark and I, the city manager, talked at one point on the phone about core city services, and I think that's what this comes down to, really, is what are the core city services that citizens should expect if they own a home or a business, run a business in San Carlos? And the way I, we were talking about it philosophically, and I said, to me, a core city services, anything that's available on an equal basis, whether someone uses it or not, but it's available on an equal basis to all. For instance, a roadway that's available to anybody to use it if they please, whether they want to walk on it, ride a bike on it, or drive their car. We put in a road, it's available to everybody. Whereas there's other things that we do as a city, for instance, the building department is a good example where it's basically fee-based. It's not out of our general fund, it's fee-based. And that makes sense because, you know, the average homeowner or business owner may never use the building department, but the person who does use the building department deserves to pay for it. So they come in, they use it, they pay a fee, and that's what basically funds our building department. There's other areas where we're not doing that, quite frankly. You know, we have, for instance, parks that are used, yes, they're available to everybody, but then there are certain user groups who use it in a special way that exclude others from using it on a general basis. In other words, I can't go down to Burton Park on a Saturday morning and play around with my dog on a field because it's being used by a sports team. That's where I think we're going to have to start looking at fee-based programs for those who use our city services over and above what's available to the general public in a general way, and that's how I would look at that. And so I think, bottom line, what we're going to come down to here is, what are the core services that we wish to provide our citizens, and then anything over and above that, including, you know, things we've talked about tonight, the public comment. Do we want to do compost programs? If we do, these are things that are over and above what might be basic city services, and we're going to have to be willing to pay for those things.
Vice Mayor?
I just had, Mr. Weiss, could you put the property tax one up again? What our rate is, is that possible to do?
I don't know, but I'll try.
Okay.
Start at the beginning, it's like your second or third slide.
You can just cycle through, maybe. Hey, drop. Go back.
I T. Way back.
Yeah.
Bingo. Thank you. I just want to point out to everybody in the audience and anybody that's listening, we can't change that point one three two seven percent that we're getting. And if you look over at Foster City, they're getting twice as much as we are on every property tax dollar. This is historical, this is something that can't be changed. If it could be, I mean, people would have already figured it out. You can see we're already in the bottom tier and below the average, and that's part of the issue that I think Mr. Weiss is trying to make, that some of these other cities, either historically or because they're newer, certainly Foster City's newer than San Carlos, however they worked it, they've got a lot more collections coming in on their property taxes. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that it's not a level playing field for revenues on all the cities in the pencil, no matter what their size are, so.
Could you explain why that is?
Not necessarily. You know, back in nineteen seventy-eight, certain cities were more conservative than others, up until Prop thirteen fixed what the property rate would be and what the distribution would be. And my understanding is, you know, it's long before I got to California, but my understanding, it was basically fixed at that time, based upon the policies and procedures of each city council that was in place up until that time. And many cities were very conscious about being favorable in keeping the property tax level low in those cities, and those cities are now stuck, have been stuck with that basic tax level ever since.
So it was grandfathered in at the, when Prop thirteen was put in in nineteen seventy-eight?
That's fine.
So it would be a, it's a statewide, state legislature.
Right.
And voter.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I would like to clarify something, and unfortunately, we have to do that on the dais because we don't get to talk offline, but there's been a discussion, and I didn't want to ask my colleagues, Mr. Royce and Mr. Gokat, about full-time equivalent versus employees. And I'm looking at this, in one sense, saying, if it's an F T E or not, I mean, let's just take police dispatch for a moment. There was a discussion at one point in time, was it really five F T Es or what is it? In one sense, I've got to look and say, we've contracted the service. You know, from the sense of San Carlos, I don't mind if it's five people or five hundred people, but the service is provided, and the fact that it's contracted from a San Carlos perspective should be a little bit more attractive, because I'm not absorbing additional healthcare costs, additional retirement, so those things are off of my books, and I'm not pulling on a longer-term liability. So I guess I wanted to just hear, what was the concern? Or when you're trying to pull out F T Es in this respect, what's the real issue?
Sure, sure. I apologize. I don't mean to not have that question answered, but in my opinion, this is something we're going to be discussing in two weeks, and we've got an awful lot of stuff on the agenda.
I appreciate that.
I didn't mean to cut you off, but this could, we could talk about F T Es for half an hour, and I think we've got folks out there that came possibly for another issue. But the mayor can decide what he would like to do.
Well, we do, it is for the council. We do have a big night tonight. If you guys have a succinct answer you'd like to briefly address, because it may have piqued curiosity of the public, but we need to move things along.
I can answer in two sentences. One is, the only reason to look at F T Es as, you know, full-time equivalents is, it just gives you a guideline of how fast are you growing in terms of headcount as a city, and, you know, is it far and above what you want to be growing, or is it in line with what you would expect? That's the only reason to look at it, because otherwise, bottom line, like I said before, is services.
Okay. Thank you. I did want to tell you about that as well, so I'm glad we got that up there. Thank you, Vice Mayor Griselli. On the hazmat, that is a county-wide service that we're providing. What's our current subsidy ratio from the different cities to help us pay for that? And I'm not, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I do want to say that one of the analyses that we should do as we go into the budget is anything that we're providing on a county or regional-wide basis. I don't think there's a lot of things, but where we're getting subsidy back for that and where we're not should factor into how we approach some of the things that we're providing for the county.
Mr. Mayor, that's the Belmont San Carlos Fire Department is getting reimbursed for that, so I can get you that number.
Right. I know a while ago, we weren't getting reimbursed. I'm not sure where it stands now.
We've got a brand-new contract, Mr. Gokat can back me up, we've got a brand-new contract with the county, and we are, the chief is very happy with the way that it's set up. We had, I think, a three-year contract, possibly. So we are getting appropriate reimbursement for what the chief feels is, I think, our costs, just to let you know.
Good. Glad to hear that's happening now.
Yeah.
I do think that the discussion that we'll bring into the budget about full-time equivalency, one of the big saddles we have in this are retirement, retiring medical benefits, as well as other retiring, retirement benefits that, like PERS, that are very expensive for all of us. So that all gets thrown into this discussion. It's, and I think everybody on the council's cognizant of that, that we have full-time equivalent, it's a good benchmark, but there are other issues that come into play. I think you're right to say that, at the end. I think you're right to say that, at the end of the day, for San Carlos, we provide program and services. And you've done a good job of listing many of the programs and services that we currently provide, as well as things that we've added. This, you know, everybody talks about the character of this town. One of the things, it's one of the connective tissues, I think, is that the city government does provide a lot of programs where it brings the community together. And one of the difficult discussions that we have on council when our revenues aren't matching our program level is, what are those things that we start to pull back on? Because they're all necessary. We have these conversations at our households, we have these conversations certainly on the state and federal level, and we're no stranger to that, and we'll dive into that next. Thank you for your report tonight.
Thank you, thank you, Mark.
We're going into a public hearing on two items. Item number 8A is consideration of amending the circulation and scenic highways element of the general plan.
I'm Deborah Nelson, the planning manager, and tonight we're asking you to hold a public hearing for amendment to the circulation and scenic highways element of the general plan, which was last updated in 2005. And the general plan must reflect roadway improvement projects and be internally consistent. So those are the two things that are the focus of the amendment tonight. The amendment does a couple of things. It incorporates and formalizes new mitigation measures from environmental reviews that the council adopted with the Palo Alto Medical Foundation project, for example, and the San Carlos marketplace, for example, and others. It updates anticipated circulation improvements which are necessary to Holly Street, the 101 interchange, and Britton Avenue. And then the general plan, we'll be talking about text, goals, objectives, and policies, and that's just the way the general plan is written. The planning commission held a public hearing on the item last month. They certified a negative declaration, you don't have to take an action on that environmental document. They also made some clarification to the text, which we incorporated and you have before you in the language. So what are the amendments? There's five basic ones. In the text, there's a description of the improvements for Holly Street 101 interchange, Holly Street and industrial, and Britton Avenue at industrial. There is another amendment, the second, to the text, which is a discussion regarding, we talk in traffic engineering terms in level of service, LOS. And so there's an update to the level of service changes that are anticipated from The third amendment is to an objective in the element, and it acknowledges the need for adequate freeway access and interchange capacity to accommodate the future traffic circulation needs from these projects that have been adopted. The fourth is a new policy, which puts in place the requirement for impact fees. And you actually adopted in your approval for the Palo Alto Medical Foundation that they pay in to traffic impact fees at such time that you adopt those. The fifth is a policy, there is a part of this, it is a circulation and scenic highways element, so there is language about what's scenic. And the traffic impact fees can certainly be used also relative to making scenic improvements on the roadways that you then in the future improve. Tonight, we're asking you to adopt the resolution. You could choose not to, you could choose to give us alternative direction, and then we suggest that you also continue the public hearing. And then your next steps, by adopting this resolution and the amendments, you, the amendments to the general plan are put in place immediately, and you will be in a position to adopt traffic mitigation fee ordinance, which you discussed the timing of that at your strategic plan meeting last month, and we expect that will come forward before June 30th. That concludes my presentation. The public works director is also here, can answer specific questions about the improvements if you have them.
Counsel, any questions for staff?
I have a question regarding, on page two at the top of the page, it describes improvements at Holly Street and 101. So if, in adopting this, we're adopting those specific recommendations?
Yes. And those are language copied from the Palo Alto Medical Foundation, EIR, so in essence, you have adopted that. Now, the project itself will also have environmental review through the state, of course, and through this council, so you will see another level of analysis.
The part I'm struggling, trying to understand is widening eastbound Holly Street approaching industrial road by 10 feet for a distance of 205 feet. I'm not seeing...
As the public works director?
Yeah, sure.
Good evening. That was our... A question?
Yes, I do. Widening the eastbound Holly Street approaching industrial road, so we're talking as you get off the freeway?
Eastbound, approaching industrial road.
Oh, okay. So, all right, I got it. And there's the gas station on the corner, and then a number of houses. So 205 feet, where does that take us to?
Has an impact on five houses on the south side, five houses on the north side.
How many houses we have total on that street?
I think total 32 or 36, 15 or so.
Okay. And so what you're saying when you say north and south side is five feet on each side?
There is five feet of the public right-of-way available on the south side, and five feet available on the north side. Basically, five feet of the front lawn of these houses are within the existing public right-of-way. So basically moving the sidewalk, using this existing right-of-way to provide another 10-foot wide lane.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation.
Counselor Griselli, question?
Well, all you do, I always wanted to ask, because I see Silicon Valley, Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, Dama, San Jose, they're all getting rid of their cloverleafs. And I love our cloverleaf, I'm able 10 o'clock at night and make that spin and come into San Carlos. How, and I'm not Irish here, how necessary? I see this is, of course, I think I understand how it increases the two lanes, without getting into detail here, but does this really mean, I mean, our cloverleaf is a must, it needs to go to really make the changes here?
Up to about mid-1980s, everybody was in favor of four cloverleaves.
Well, I'm an 80s guy.
Yeah. Including federal administration, Caltrans, all local agencies.
Okay.
And actually, Holly Street was built and completed '87, '88. Right after that, early 90s, there were a lot of studies done by Caltrans and other agencies that showed the full cloverleaf reduces the efficiency of the highway operation. And the reason for that, and increases accidents. Let me see if I have a...
So it's a higher risk, higher accident rate with cloverleaf?
Higher accident rates with four cloverleaf. This is, is clear to you, okay, this is northbound Holly 101.
Right.
And the capacity, this section of Holly industrial will go to level of service F and E because the traffic cannot take this loop to northbound 101. The traffic will back off all the way here. So to mitigate that, to solve the problem, you have to widen this loop to two lanes. Now, you look at, we're bringing two lanes of traffic here, and one lane of traffic trying to get through this loop to get off. And that little section, we call it a weedy section, that's where it really reduces the efficiency of the highway operation.
Okay.
The traffic actually backs up, especially now that we have a metering light here, if at any time in the future, the traffic backs up from metering light to here, this traffic cannot even get off. They have to wait a long time. So widening this to two lanes, we put two lanes freely going through by eliminating this loop, but having the traffic northbound off-ramp be only here, widen that ramp to two lanes, and put a signal here so people can come here and left to go west on Holly.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Great, thank you. So can I have a piece of the asphalt when we tear this thing apart?
In fact, we'll have it all brought to your front yard. That'd be great.
So we can bring your truckload if you like.
Okay, no, I feel better, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we were doing the right thing.
Unless any other councilman has a comment, this is a public hearing, I'd like to open the public hearing on this item, if any public would like to speak on this item. See none? Can I have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other further council discussion about this item?
Just one quick comment, since Mr. Royce asked about the cloverleaf, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, we see the advantage of switching over to signalized on and off-ramps, which are more like T-intersections where you come off the freeway and you're at the street, much like you have at, think of the intersection at Whipple, when you come off at Whipple and you go through a signalized off-ramp. And the advantage to cyclists and pedestrians is cars actually have to stop. So if you're trying, if we're ever to have a bike lane going over Holly into Redwood Shores, you almost have to have a signalized on and off-ramp. Makes it much more safe.
Given tonight's discussion, I was going to think maybe we can get a soccer field in where that cloverleaf...
It might work.
Maybe. Um, any council comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2008-dash...
16.
16. Resolution of City Council, City of San Carlos adopting a general plan amendment slash updating the San Carlos circulation and scenic highways element.
Second. Christine?
Counselor Ramon.
Yes.
Counselor Griselli.
Yes.
Counselor Gocott.
Yes.
Counselor Weiss.
Yes.
And with that, we'll move on to item number 8B, which is, it's also a public hearing, consideration of a request from Palo Alto Medical Foundation for the City of San Carlos to adopt a resolution joining the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, hold a TEFRA Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act of 82 hearing for the purpose of issuance of private activity hospital bonds. How did I do?
Very well put.
I take your presentation?
Yeah. And listen, I'm sorry, but you tried to get a piece of the highway, Barry's going to have naming rights to the, so you'll be able to get that. Well, it's my pleasure, actually, to propose these two resolutions to you. I don't think I've ever proposed resolutions that involve $300 million worth of bonds issuance. That's to support Sutter, Sutter Health's construction of the Pamp Hospital and Health Services Project in San Carlos. The good news for the City of San Carlos is even though we joined the JPA, there is no liability to the city from joining the JPA. There's language in the JPA, like most JPAs, that eliminates liability to the members who join the JPA or anything that goes on in the JPA. That's number one. Number two, we do not, even though we given okay to this state JPA, the city is not a party to and is not responsible in any way for the bonds that are issued. And they add, even at the end, they make Sutter or any of the participants that have the bonds issued for programs like this, to fully indemnify all the agencies involved in such a bond issuance. We do have an attorney from the JPA or representative, Michael LaPierre. If there are any questions? And like I said, there are two actions, open and close the public hearing, of course, and then two resolutions. The second resolution was added, given to you tonight, for joining the JPA, and the other resolution is approving the tax-exempt bond financing.
So counsel, there's two resolutions before us. I also want to point out Cecilia Montalvo is here for questions from Pamp, if we have any. Counsel questions for staff?
I just have one question, Mr. Lanzano. I mean, I understand, you know, we're indemnified and all the, what was, someone passed this law in the state of California, what was the purpose of this? This seems like a rubber-stamp thing, it seems, just, is it a technical, what's the technicality here?
I'll let Mr. LaPierre answer that question.
But in 25, what'd you less, Mr. LaPierre? We have a very busy thing. We pay by the word.
Actually, a federal requirement.
Okay, I'm sorry, federal law.
And it was really a public accountability procedure, whenever private, tax-exempt bonds were used for private use, to allow the public to speak for or against a proposed project.
Okay, so in effect, the public hearing is the big point here?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just thank you, I appreciate that.
That's good. With that, I'd like to open the public hearing on this item, if anybody from the public would like to speak. I don't believe that's a speaker. Mr. Aaron, move to close public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other discussion on this item for counsel? Mr. Mayor, I move for adoption of resolution number...
Are you doing both?
Can I do both at the same time?
Oh, great, okay, so...
17 and 18.
A resolution approving authorizing and directing execution of an amended and restated joint exercise powers agreement related to the California Statewide Communities Development Authority and a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving a tax-exempt bond financing to be issued by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority to benefit Sutter Health and certain affiliates. Do we have a second?
Second.
Christine.
Counselor Ramon.
Yes.
Counselor Griselli.
Yes.
Counselor Gocott.
Yes.
Counselor Weiss.
Yes.
Mayor Lewis.
Yes. And with that, we'll move on to item 9A, I believe. Item 9A is consideration of alternatives for athletic field improvements, review of recommendations by citizens Athletic Fields Committee and Parks and Recreation Director and council direction to staff. Director Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis, and members of the council. As you know, we've been discussing the need for increased use on athletic fields for many years now. And with the recent turn of events, with the Heather Field Agreement not being able to be worked out, at the March 18th City Council Department Head Retreat, City Council adopted a six-month objective to have myself return to you by May 15th with alternatives and recommendations for athletic fields. And thus, I am here tonight. I went back and reviewed all the information, particularly that of the Citizens Fields Committee, and as a professional here, I am recommending that Highlands Field, Lower Field be the field, be converted to synthetic turf to address the issue of increased usage on our fields. The Fields Committee was appointed by City Council, 28 members representing all areas of the community, all interest, and the majority of them, by a vote of 16 to 6, recommended Highlands as their number-one choice, followed by Heather, and after that, looking for additional parkland someplace. Staff fully supports this recommendation for many reasons. First of all, particularly in light of these economic times, we find that going to Highlands Lower Field is the best return on investment. Best return on investment in two areas, financial and usage. Highlands is the only full-size, fully-lighted field that we have in the city. It is, the field belongs to the city, and it gives us the biggest bang for increased play. And the report I've given you compared to Tierra Linda, which was one of the other recommendations, and again, I pulled information from the Fields Committee report for consistency, we get the most increased play by going to Highlands Field, again, because it's full-size, fully-lighted. Every group can play there, everything from T-ball all the way up to adult softball. Only Burton Park can say that, and it's not fully-lighted. Also, the increased play that we anticipate would only bring it back to the levels that it used to experience. Beginning in 2002, we mandated a decrease in usage on that field. Soccer practice, for example, only has 50 to 60 percent of the time now that they had in the past. Now, it's done for a very specific reason. Our first primary, our first priority has to be keep the field safe and playable. In order to keep it that way, we needed to reduce usage. Just like any turf, just like any natural grass in front of your house, if you run enough people across it, you're going to ruin that lawn. And that's what we needed to avoid. It's too expensive an asset that the city has too much money invested in. But I want to emphasize, it would only take us back to the previous levels. And while synthetic turf means we don't close it down for maintenance, we don't close it down, you don't have to close it down for rain, it doesn't mean you're going to use it every minute, every day. I want to emphasize, it would only take us back to the previous levels. And while synthetic turf means we don't close it down for maintenance, we don't close it down, you don't have to close it down for rain, it doesn't mean you're gonna use it every minute, every day. For one thing, the lights go off at ten o'clock, and the average time of lights going off at Highlands is nine fifteen. But also, the reality is that people are not gonna play sports in January in the rain, even though technically the field could be available for that. It's just not gonna happen. Even in the past, when we had the significant increase in usage there, people still didn't use it all those extra times. Next reason why we support this are some environmental reasons. And all this is documented in the report from Calendour Associates, which is an objective third-party consultant that the City Council hired to analyze the Heather Field situation. First of all, water. We spend five and a half million gallons a year on the Highlands Lower Field, primarily because it's a sand-based field versus a soil-based, and that means the water rushes right through. We are unsure at this point where the future supply of water is gonna be. I think we're all aware that in this state, in this country, and actually in the world, water is your next coming crisis of what do we do with the water and how do we conserve it. We have been told by Cal Water that through two thousand and nine, we should not expect any decrease in our allotment or raise in fees. Unfortunately, two thousand and nine is next year. The City of Redwood City went to synthetic turf fields primarily for water because they were over their allocation. They have since added seven synthetic turf fields. We have been told by Cal Water that because they're gonna be doing extra work to hatchet and the pipeline to get down here, that they're gonna want some money to help pay for all those improvements. And those improvements are the multi-million dollars to pay for those things. So we anticipate at some point an increase in rates because of that, and if we have a drought, we'll have a decrease in allocation. We fear that that might be coming sooner than later, but the recent rains this year seem to have helped that a little bit. Also environmentally, you don't need to use the chemicals on synthetic turf like you do natural turf. We use herbicides, we use pesticides, we use fertilizers. And as much as, fortunately, we have some of the top professionals in the industry, and they know what levels of materials to apply. Unlike some people, more is not better. We use the prescribed amount. But what happens is any of those chemicals we put on natural turf on any of our fields goes into the groundwater at some level. I talked to the Hartz Superintendent today from Redwood City, and he was telling me they did a recent study, and the ground, the water going into the ground from synthetic fields had nothing in it. And so you won't get any of that runoff into the groundwater from any of the chemicals, regardless of how synthetic, the synthetic field is made. Also, we will use less carbon with our gasoline engines to do the maintenance on synthetic turf, because you won't be doing, you won't be doing the mowing, and the Cushman cart we'll use will be there less times than it is currently. Also, there is no significant documented healthcare risk. And I know that in the head of school discussion, a lot of people brought up idea of off-gassing and different things. I have reports I can show you. There are no documented risks at all for health. In fact, I had a parks professional in another city tell me that the reality is you're gonna find more contamination in a natural turf field with the organisms there and different things. I have not done the research on that, but he's a respected professional in the field. I can tell you that at a recent trade show, there is at least one synthetic turf company who has received LEED certification. You know, that's green certification, and that was because they used the recycled rubber for the infill. And so they actually received LEED certification. Another reason that we support Highlands Lower Field for synthetic is the budget. As Mark Weiss mentioned two years earlier, we're anticipating budget cuts for the next three years. And for the council members that have been here, we've experienced budget cuts for the previous four years. And it's not, it doesn't look like it's gonna change unless, you know, we get some kind of new revenue stream, which you certainly can't count on at this point. We anticipate the need to make further cuts. Two years ago, we lost one park maintenance worker. And so that means less workers to work on our fields. Right now, we have one park maintenance worker for every sixteen point four acres. City of Foster City, by comparison, has one maintenance worker for every six point one acres. So to lose any more would obviously have a severe impact. So for budget reasons, we favor this. As far as some of the other options, Tierra Linda is documented in the report. There's really no significant increase in play there. It's used heavily during the significant seasons, in the fall with soccer and in the spring with girls' softball. The middle school teams, soccer teams do not currently use Tierra Linda. They use the city fields because of the condition of their field. And if that field were to be made into synthetic turf, I think we can safely assume that their field, their teams who want to use that field, which would mean even less availability for the community. And what we're talking about is availability for all these community people to use these fields. Significant cost to Tierra Linda, you have the cost in your report. Plus, there is a severe angle of that field as you walk toward Carmont High School. To raise the level of that field is gonna have significant dollar implications. And after the Fields Report was completed, their staff told us that they have problems with runoff. From the north side, there's a hill just to the north of the field, and they got water that runs off, and you have to deal with that. Also, they just put a new building on that field that, not very much, but it infringed on the current field size. And so we don't know what that future's gonna hold on there. But again, I think we get no real return on investment there. Because Highlands Field, as well as Crestview Field, need to be addressed now. By making Highlands Lower Field synthetic, we can take the pressure off several fields. Some of the other options presented in your report, and the Fields Committee looked at everything. I mean, we looked at Brenton acreage, we looked at every possible park, came up with data for the ones that they thought were more realistic. You have in your report different fields and reasons why they were not the number-one recommended choice. Everything ranged from the field was just completely renovated in the last couple of years, like Arguello and L'Oreal before that. Even Burton was completely renovated in the year two thousand. Some are small, some have no lighting. The only other field with lights is Burton, and it is only partially lit. So we've listed all the fields there. Central Middle School was looked at by the committee. There's, well, you would pick, if you were to cash in the asphalt, which is where you could get the biggest space, you could pick up some additional play. However, it would only be for ages ten and eleven and under. Even the Central Middle School soccer team could not play there, because it wouldn't be big enough for the soccer team of their school to play. So it's not really big enough for community needs. The idea of a full-size field besides a game is also practice. So you can put extra teams on a field to practice at one time. Lights are not practical at Central. There'll be additional costs required, moving the portables. The basketball courts would have to be moved. Also, we have very little space for asphalt sports in this town. We get one hundred and twenty-five youth at our summer roller hockey camps. You see other kids out there on their own playing roller hockey. There's PE activities for the middle school. Lots of informal play, bike riding, skateboarding, and everything else. And that field is already, that asphalt's already used by soccer and Little League, particularly when some fields are closed because of rain, they go and they work out. It's not ideal, but they go there and work out. So there's already some use. And of course, there's no water savings at all. Highlands Lower Field was said to be a sports complex. As we all know, the school district, the high school school district was gonna sell that property for homes. The sports community came to the city and said, we need help saving that for the sport, to save the sports fields. And that's what happened. The sports fields were saved. It is a sports complex. We are only changing the surface if we were to do this. Traffic and noise could be mitigated. You have some documents in your report. Some of these things have been done in the past, where soccer people, in particular for Soccer Rama, which happens once a year for two and a half hours, have gotten out and helped direct traffic and that kind of thing. I can honestly say that I've been up there for Soccer Rama and other large events, and I'm always able to find a parking space, usually in the tennis court farthest away, the tennis court parking lot. And I understand human nature that nobody wants to walk too far. We're a nation dedicated to health and wellness and parking as close to the stadium as we can. That was a quote I stole from somebody, so I don't get credit for it. Highlands Park has the most parking of any other park. There are ninety-six parking spaces in the two parking lots, plus forty-three estimated parking spots on the street adjacent to the, to the field, not in front of somebody's house. Also, when you have multiple teams practicing, the reality is, parents do not come and stay and watch. A few do. Most drop their kids off and they leave. So it's not like you need a ton of parking for a lot of practices going on. And no, we would not put ten practices on the field at one time. For one thing, you'd be bumping into each other, you'd have no practice going. We've done some analysis that shows you could put sixteen's out there with the small kids. Even that, we would not recommend. Highlands Field, as I mentioned, is suffering. Again, it's accumulated overuse. Our Park Superintendent Guy Wallace, who's in attendance here, tells me this numerous times, that because we've overused our fields, that that accumulated use is making the field weaker and weaker. We need to address it. If the City Council would choose not to do synthetic, then we would most likely begin to do some reductions in the near future, again, to keep it safe and playable. We see it as a double expense if you went anywhere other than Highlands, because we still need to do something with Highlands, particularly if you went to a non-city field. So in summary, we recommend what the Fields Committee, that represented the whole community, recommended, and that is to do Highlands Park Lower Field. It's the best return on investment, both financially and for usage apply, and brings the level of play back up to where it was before we did the reductions. And at this point, I'm prepared to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Weiss. Questions for Director Weiss? Councilmember, do you wanna start with you?
No.
Councilmember Mott, do you have questions? Councilmember Royce?
No questions.
Matt?
Looks like it comes back to me.
Comes back to you.
All right. Where did I write my notes? First question is, you had mentioned that the site there was reserved for athletic use when the homes were developed?
My understanding is, and Brian Moore, who was here when it happened, or maybe some of the people in the audience, my understanding is that the sports community came forward and said, we need to save those fields. And they were saved for the fields.
Could the same be said for Crestview in terms of when houses were built and that area was developed? I know there were some sites where houses ended up getting built, and originally they were set aside for parks. But was Crestview itself set aside?
I don't know that. I'm sorry.
Okay. Also, regarding Crestview, what's the parking capacity there?
Parking. Give me just a second, and I can tell you.
Versus Highlands?
Eighteen.
I tried to anticipate questions. I have a lot of documents here. And I know I have the parking.
With Grisilli's driveway.
I can tell you it has a few. I knew this would happen. I went to look for data.
I was, I was just at that park, Barry, and honestly, I'm counting, there's, there's a restroom, there's a restroom facility there that takes up a lot of, you know, the space. I think there's four, exactly in the parking area itself, there's less than ten.
Less than, how many?
But, but less than ten, I think. But there, but people park on the, I'm sorry.
There are, there's actually fifteen, fourteen regular and one handicap.
Just one handicap? Okay. I stand corrected, sorry.
And you can get eight to ten on the street leading up to it.
Right. And then up, up the street and all around the street, yeah.
And then versus Highlands?
Which?
Versus the one you're recommending, has how many?
Highlands has ninety-six parking spots in the two parking lots and forty-three to forty-five spots on the street adjacent to the park, not in front of the house.
Okay. And the other question I had was, you talked about less carbon from running our lawnmowers and so forth and equipment.
Correct.
To maintain the fields. Is there actually analysis of not having lawnmowers running and so forth versus grass growing and oxygen being created?
Right. Right now, we use lawnmowers, we use power edgers, gasoline, gasoline edgers, little Cushman carts to, you know, deliver things around. What you do with synthetic turf, you don't mow it, obviously. You don't run a fertilizer machine over it or verticutters, you know, slicer. You do have a machine that flushes it up and stuff, and you've got a Cushman cart to run around and do things.
So I understand the difference in equipment. What I'm saying is, you're also taking, you know, so much square footage of grass out of the picture, and that grass is creating oxygen. So it seems to me if you're gonna say, well, you're taking this equipment out, you're also taking this grass out. And right now, you've got equipment running around that's, you know, creating pollution, if you will, but you've also got grass growing every day that's creating fresh oxygen.
Sure.
There's gotta be some kind of...
Mr. Growcott, I did the calculations last night, so if...
Pretty good.
If Highlands was converted to synthetic, or just pretend it's grass for a moment, the ten-year carbon sequestration you're gonna get is about three and a half tons. One SUV driven an average number of miles in California generates about seven tons per year.
About a lawnmower.
Uh, yeah.
What are you gonna look at?
I'd say figure out how much gas it burns, but if you wanna play with this, multiply how many gallons you're gonna burn times nineteen point six pounds, and that'll give you how much greenhouse gas you're gonna get out of it. Kids at home, get out your calculators. Let's keep moving things along.
Sure. The, let's see. The, the last question I had is, you'd mentioned L'Oreal, and I'm not sure when L'Oreal was redone. You mentioned Arguello and Burton, and I'm just curious why when those projects were done, especially Arguello, which is more, the most recent.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah. What I'm asking is, we've had three parks renovated in the last, I don't know, ten years, I would, I would guess. L'Oreal, Arguello, and Burton. But we didn't put synthetic turf in any of those parks. And the question is, why did we not consider synthetic turf for those renovations?
Thank you for repeating. Mayor Lewis, I didn't get the chance to apologize to you ahead of time like the other four. I'm so clogged up with allergies. I'm having a couple of, I'm clogged, so if I ask you to repeat, I'm sorry.
We'll yell at you.
When we did Burton Park, synthetic was really not a viable option at that point. It was just coming on the market. L'Oreal and Arguello are both very small fields, so again, it's return on investment. And we put in hybrid Bermuda, which is a tougher turf. And because you play small kids there rather than big kids, and there's no lights, so there's no night play, extra play.
Mm-hmm.
It's working well for those two fields. So we didn't need to do that. But Highlands, you know, even Burton, who's big, or Crestview, which has a lot of soccer, those fields are more ripe for synthetic.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other council questions?
A question for you. There's, and I believe it's been primarily used in Europe in synthetic field, there's a white infill material that I think significantly reduces the heat buildup on hot days. Do you have any...
I've done some research on that. And I talked to one of the leading vendors of synthetic turf, and he said that there are other lighter color infills, such as green or tan, and they have not done a field with white rubber, although it is being tested and looked, he said it looked terrible from a aesthetics point of view. He said it would cost us about an extra fifteen thousand to put a lighter color infill in. He'd be glad to take our money, but he doesn't think it's needed, particularly in this climate, and that it does not have a significant reduction in the heat.
Okay. And then, could you or even staff, Mr. Lanzo, just the environmental review process, what's the staff suggestion on environmental review process?
Staff has no suggestion at this point. We've asked council to have the appropriate staff person, which would be our Community Development Director, to do an environmental analysis to tell us what level is needed.
Barry, any city project would, would require perhaps a sequo analysis, and you start with an initial study. And whichever direction the council decides to go, we would have appropriate staff or consultant do an initial study and proceed from there with a sequo- appropriate staff or consultant do an initial study and proceed from there with a sequoia analysis.
Great. Thank you very much. And with no other, I'm sorry? Well, sure.
No, it's more appropriate here at the end. When we do get to the public comment, which is coming next here, since Field Committee did approve this about two years ago, if anybody is representing or is from that group, I would just like to ask, if anything that has changed over two years?
Randy.
That can impact the decision of that group.
With all due respect, Councilmember Lewis, I don't want to open-ended question to the Fields Committee. If someone from the Fields Committee is planning on speaking this evening, would like to address that question, that's also something we can continue to look into if that comes up. With that, I have several speaker codes tonight, and if anybody is planning on speaking tonight, there are speaker codes over here at the table, please go and fill one out now rather than later, so we can sort of conserve the time. And what I'll do is, I'll read two names, and if the person on deck, so to speak, can be ready to speak. We're going to keep it to two minutes per speaker tonight, and I'm going to enforce that unilaterally, so please don't take it upfront as any disrespect for the content of what anybody says, or for that position that they might be coming from. But we'll keep it to two minutes to keep things moving along. The first two speakers, first speaker will be John Carlson, and next speaker will be Dean Grayson.
Good evening, members of the council. My name's John Carlson, I'm a resident, live up on the La Mesa area of Crestview. My kids play AYSO and Little League, we're pretty involved in kids' sports at that level. Anyway, I also am a volunteer on the AYSO board. Just briefly, anecdotally, it's amazing how hard the AYSO board member who does the winter league scheduling has had to pedal this year to try to find space. It's a continual problem for him. The San Carlos fields are either wet or taken up or whatever, so they've played a good number of their games and practices in Royal City this year. I don't have that quantified, but just listening to his descriptions in the board meetings, it's pretty clear that field scheduling is a big problem. AYSO has, in fact, limited the players to some degree, not huge yet, but things like some of the people who are in Royal City but go to San Carlos School District can no longer be in the San Carlos AYSO to join, if they haven't been in it in the past. So it's starting to build and be a problem. You know, my feeling is, kids' sports is one of those connecting tissues, like you said, of the community. It's a big deal. Lots and lots of people come out on a Saturday and use the parks in that way. I kind of, in my head, we have something like fifteen hundred kids in the AYSO program, you know, our round numbers varies a little bit here. That's on the order of five percent of the San Carlos population. You add one parent who comes to watch on a Saturday, and we've got ten percent of the San Carlos population using our parks for soccer on a Saturday. Pretty big use. Anyway, it's becoming a problem, the fields, obviously, the issues have been hashed and rehashed. The bottom line is, it's time to just get it done.
Thank you very much. My next question, Dean Grayson, followed by Ann Tang.
Hello, my name's Dean Grayson, thank you very much. I'm also, I'm a new board member of the San Carlos AYSO, but I'm also a multi-year soccer coach, multi-year baseball coach, den leader in Cub Scouts, you know, five, six-year resident at San Carlos over on Rock Ridge Road off of Alameda. To touch on a little bit what John mentioned when he was referring to winter league, I happen to be one of the two coaches in, or head coaches in winter league, and to touch on what Mr. Royce mentioned, first off, with regard to kids walking to school and getting that exercise, I have to tell you, from a coach's standpoint, it was awful to watch these kids come to practice every week and not be able to get on a field because we had all kinds of rain, and then sometimes not even have a game for a month or two because other fields, because we had away games, and they couldn't, you know, so they're practicing for two months with no payoff. And it was awful to see the kids, they were becoming somewhat disinterested because all they could do is practice on blacktop, and it was unfortunate. You know, certainly the water conservation and economic conservation of a turf field, I think, is going to be of great benefit to San Carlos. I happen to, Mr. Grocott, to touch on, when you were talking about the equivalency of SUV or lawnmower usage, et cetera, I happen to have a green Silicon Valley startup who's working in that area and happened to actually mention something along those lines, that running a mower for an hour is equivalent of about five SUVs running for that same hour. So because there's no catalytic converter, that it's much less green. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. And Ben Tang, excuse me, Ann Tang is up, followed by Ben Tang.
Hi, my name is Ann Tang. I've been living in Carlos, San Carlos for almost ten years now, and I am a user of the park, and I use the park not to play organized sports. Barry talked about, Barry Weiss talked about how the primary use of this park is for organized sports. Well, you can walk around this park on any given weekday during the day, there are no organized sports, and there are many citizens in this city who use that park on a regular basis as a park. If you cover it with plastic and you fence it off for organized sports, you are eliminating the use of that part of the community of these fields. And we express concern about losing the use of asphalt for the people who are skateboarding, how about the people who like grass and love the park, to play with their kids, to take walks, to jog, to do many other things. It is not just a sports field. It's called Highlands Park, not Highlands Sports Field. In terms of putting plastic on, the environmental benefits of that, let's not talk about the cost of producing the plastic. There are environmental costs in making the field that are being put on that are not discussed. There's costs involved with replacing that field in eight to ten years, which I don't know where in the budget we're going to have that million and a half dollars that we're going to need to replace it with. It's a lot more expensive than throwing down a bunch of grass seed on a reseeded lawn. And I feel that those costs have been left out of the discussion, and they need to be factored in, the full cost, it's just like the subprime mortgage, you're just looking at the interest-only payment till the balloon comes due. We need to include the balloon, and the balloon is a significant piece, which has not been discussed. And it is absolutely, I mean, it's fiscally irresponsible to consider turf without considering the full cost, which includes the price tag. So in sum, I just, I think this is absolutely the wrong way to go, the wrong way to use this field. It is a park, and the incremental use, putting plastic on it removes the use of that park from a significant portion of San Carlos' community.
Thank you. Ben Tang, followed by Tom Gee.
Hi, my name's Ben Tang, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. I guess I'd like to express my disappointment that this council and the director of Parks and Recs continue to use this issue as a divisive issue that divides our wonderful city. I mean, for the longest time last year, people came, spoke their mind, and basically was upset over the issue. We absolutely need additional field space, but this way of doing it is dividing our city, and I highly recommend we stop doing that. The other piece is, in talking with my daughter, who's been in AYSO, is in CY now, is an avid soccer player, she plays year-round, she has no problem playing. She plays on grass, indoor soccer, all year-round. It's possible, you can do it in this city. So the other piece is that she, and she, quote, "Three of her best friends who went to Nationals in Florida this year do not play on turf, and grass is where they play, both locally and at the Nationals." Expense, absolutely. Someone should do the cash flow, a year, one point five to two million dollars a year every eight to ten years, what is that impact on the city, and who's going to pay, and how are we going to pay? In terms of global warming and the responsibility of the committee to express the community's desire to go green, the carbon footprint here is, you're going to leave, as a production of that rubber, the emissions from the field, as, sorry, but I mean, the short-term thing, obviously, is to remove those mowers. If you get some electric mowers, if it's six SUVs, great, that's six SUVs per week you're taking off the field. Why would you take grass, which has a positive impact on the impact, off the field? It's just amazing. As far as the various legal issues that people have brought up about the community and the value of real estate in the area as a result of a decision to change the park into a sports facility, many of my neighbors and many of the citizens of this city would have the same opinion, that that would be a waste of city dollars to enter into those lawsuits to make this transition from grass to turf. Am I on time?
Yes. You're out of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tang. And Tom Gee, followed by Heidi Liebenkraun. Again, if you're up next, if you could please move toward the front of the room so we can move right into it. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm surprised that you called my name, because I didn't fill in a car, but I'll go ahead and speak.
Is this not you, I'm sorry? Tom Gee? Yes?
Here, we'll have another person look at it. Tom Gee? You must have filled it out yesterday.
But I'll go ahead and speak.
Someone must have filled it out for you, Mr. Gee.
You have a fan.
They must have known you wanted to speak.
Right. Just this morning, I took a survey of people playing tennis at the tennis courts, and some people walking their dogs and so forth. So I got an opinion on twenty-two people, and out of twenty-two, sixteen people are against turf. So I imagine that if you took a vote in this city, I would imagine that you have a majority of the people against turf. And I think that's, would be a fair assessment on asking the people, not just having a small group opposing you, or having a small group for it. I think you need to look at the overall picture. There's a lot of senior people, there are a lot of other people that do various things in the park, and I think you've got to take the opinion of everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Heidi Liebenkraun, followed by Richard Crowe.
Hello, city council members, we're here again. I'm impressed by the number of certified green businesses that were honored tonight. I think that it really speaks to San Carlos' desire to be a clean, green city, and we're really making some headway and setting an example like that. And this image is reinforced by the results of the current Park and Rec survey of what people want in this community. A community pool, increased open space, and more hiking trails were at the top of that list of things that people in this city want most. So while we're faced again with this proposal for synthetic turf at Highlands, Highlands is a beautiful, multi-use park, it already hosts more sports than any other park in the city, and it has open space. The council voted, this council voted in 2006 unanimously to not put synthetic turf at Highlands, to preserve the grass at Highlands, in fact, to install even better grass in the model of Burton or Arguello Park. Do those months of, and if you were here on the council, you remember them, those months of intense study and community input, do they mean nothing? Does that vote mean nothing? Should we sacrifice the desires of most of the citizens of this city for the, what they want is the enjoyment of natural, open, green space for the benefit of a small group of elite athletes? A plastic soccer field would eliminate casual uses of this grassy open space. Isn't it the city's mission to preserve and increase parkland rather than facilities for a specific sport? How would San Carlos react to covering Highlands with asphalt for more basketball courts? That would be essentially no different than this proposal. Synthetic turf is not field improvement, it is field debasement, it is park destruction. There is legislation in the state senate right now to stop or slow the installation of synthetic turf until the health hazards can be better assessed. The plastic and rubber particles in synthetic turf produce toxic fumes on a warm day. They absorb and radiate heat so effectively that the surface temperature can reach one hundred and sixty degrees on a sunny day that's only in the seventies ambient temperature. Synthetic turf produces toxic runoff into our wastewater system, draining into the bay, endangering fish and wildlife. We've all heard about the salmon season disaster that's upon us now. Particles inhaled or ingested by children can cause serious health problems. Are we willing to let our children be guinea pigs for this hazardous substance? Do we want to contribute to the rapidly escalating global warming problem? Or do we want to preserve and increase the oxygen-producing, cooling, and psychologically soothing green areas where children, pets, adults can play and enjoy green space, plants, trees, and yes, grass?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Richard Crowe, followed by Greg Harris.
Mayor Lewis, members of the state council, I'd like to start off by the consideration of Councilman Amid's earlier comment.
We'll be on the microphone so we can...
He's someone to hold that for you, Mr. Crowe.
Thanks, sir.
Oh, okay.
Can I put another microphone here?
It's not working.
I'd like to go back to Councilman Amid's earlier comment. We are going to run our city in an economically sustainable fashion. And what Barry Weiss opened earlier, for budget reasons, we're recommending turf, and it has the best return on investment. When you look at a return on investment, you need to look at two things, the payback period and the net present value cost. What's shown in this graph is the first, the bottom green line?
This is the current cost of maintenance provided by the Parks and Rec. You can see that that, on a cumulative basis, over ten years. The next line is upgrading Highlands Park, as you approved in 2006, which was not performed by the Parks and Rec. And what we've done is proposed a replacement every five years, so immediately, five years from now and five years from there. You can see that. The accumulative cost for that is one point five million. The last line, the top line, is the proposed cost of turf. And as you can see, that is always higher. In fact, just when you might get a return on investment, you have to account for the replacement of it, and it thus goes up. Now, these are net cumulative cash outlays. You have to discount them to time zero, present value dollars, and compare it. If you discount it to time zero, the turf comes out at two million, compared to the present value of just doing what we're doing today, maintaining it, at five hundred thousand. It's one point five million dollars more than our current cost. If you replace this field with all new grass, with the tougher natural ingredients that was referred to in Barry's thing, three times in that period, we still come out five hundred thousand dollars ahead. If we're talking about running this city in an economically sustainable fashion and looking for the best return on investment, it's green. At the beginning of this council meeting, we honored several businesses for green efforts. To quote Mayor Lewis, "For conducting business in an environmentally friendly manner." The sign entering Highlands reads Highlands Park, not Highlands Sports Complex, not Highlands Plastic. There's an opportunity to save green in two ways, economically and for the benefit of our community as a park. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Harris, followed by Danielle Huerta.
Councilman Royce asked what's happened differently since the Fields Commission disbanded. As a member of the Fields Commission, a lot has happened since the Fields Committee disbanded. The Parks and Rec Commission, for example, voted against synthetic turf at Highlands. Health concerns, both in the state and across the country, all you have to do is a Google search, you'll see lots of incidents of health concerns that never existed. This is a brand-new product. This product hasn't even lived eight years, for the most part, and health concerns are just beginning to emerge. And we also, the calendar report demonstrated over twenty years, the total cost is thirty-five percent higher, and that's without NEIR. And so these are all important facts that came to light after the commission disbanded. None of them were covered by Mr. Weiss and his lengthy packet, including what I think is the most important thing. In October of 2007, sponsored by our Parks and Rec Commission, we engaged the Strategic Research Associates to survey San Carlos citizens. We talked to four hundred people throughout our sitting, we asked them specifically, "Please, think about, think for a second about how you would describe a really good park system." Two percent said synthetic turf. Well, what did they say? Well, twenty-one elements came higher priority for San Carlos citizens than synthetic turf. Eighteen percent said playground equipment. Fourteen percent, more open space. Eleven percent, improved landscaping. Nine percent... 18% said playground equipment, 14% more open space, 11% improved landscaping, 9% wanted improved restroom facilities, 2% wanted synthetic turf, 8% wanted picnic, 8% wanted trails and hiking, and the list goes on. 2% of San Carlos is about 500 people. We have much fewer than that here. We have the San Carlos Board of the Soccer Team here, all here to represent the interests of soccer. I haven't heard from anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Huerta, followed by Jeff Klein.
Well, my name is Danielle Huerta, I live at 205 Grass Galore. I want to reiterate that on May 8, 2006, the City Council voted 5 to 0 to install new grass at Highlands Park. That hasn't happened yet. The council also voted 3 to 2 to consider, have the Parks Department consider turf at Tierra Linda, and this was after months and months of input from both the Parks Department and the community. And then I want to reiterate the, what Greg just mentioned about the parks, when the process of doing a Parks Master Plan, I attended a very good community meeting about that recently. But the survey results don't support that a large majority of people want artificial turf in this city, and I'm questioning why the council is being asked to vote on turf when very shortly you're going to be seeing the whole Parks Master Plan. It seems that the timing is not ideal because you should be presented with the new Parks Master Plan before you're asked to spend more than $1 million on any one element. Briefly, I want to bring up that if water is such a big usage, I would like to know why we're watering Highlands Park in the middle of the day, which I frequently see when I drive by, as opposed to either very early in the morning or late in the evening when water usage would be less. And lastly, my husband has coached San Carlos basketball, baseball, and soccer, and asked me to tell you that, for example, for this year, my nine-year-old's baseball team is playing 20 games, which just as a mother, I think is way too many. But by contrast, the basketball team only had seven scheduled games in the youth center gym. Now, all of our athletic recreational facilities are a limited resource, but if we're getting seven games for basketball teams and 20 games for baseball, I'm wondering why there's such a huge discrepancy and how we're allocating limited resources. So I really urge you to look at the survey that was done in October by the Parks Department before you spend $1 million plus. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Klein, followed by Donna Coles.
What I'm handing out here are three things, basically. One is the San Mateo County zoning regulations that discuss parking, and it clearly shows that Highlands Park, to improve Highlands Park in any way, to intensify the use in any way, you'd need to put at least 44 more parking spaces. Now, Mr. Weiss is correct that Highlands Park does have more parking than any other park, but it's also the only park that has two full-size soccer fields, three full-size baseball fields, as many tennis courts as it has, plus a playground and picnic areas. So for that size of a park, the San Mateo County ordinance says that we need to have at least 140 parking spaces. The regulation is right there. The San Carlos parking ordinance is even more restrictive. It says we should have 175 off-street parking spaces. I also provide some pictures of Sakarama, and you can see how intensely used the streets were. And even more important is the other packet. The other packet was photos taken just this Saturday. The fields were closed. Fields were closed this last Saturday, and you can see what kind of crowded parking congestion there was. You can see on page four, the bottom photo shows that even the tennis court parking facility was fully filled up. There was no parking spaces at all in the tennis courts. Page three of that colored photo, within just a few minutes, the very narrow access road, we had one car trying to exit, one car trying to enter. One of the cars had to back up, and just a few minutes later, the exact same thing happened. Check number three, page three of the photos taken this Saturday. So Highlands Park is two miles from downtown. Bringing crowds to Highlands Park does not help the business district at all, does not help city sales tax. If we could bring the kind of crowds that are at Highlands Park, even when the fields are closed, even when they're closed, to downtown, who knows? We might be able to generate a lot more revenue, maybe even enough to buy a new park. If we could bring that kind of crowds to downtown, you know, Highlands Park is way up the hill, it's two miles from downtown, a lot of people can get access to 280, come to Highlands Park and just leave without spending any money downtown. What I think we need is to have more crowds, not at Highlands Park, but more crowds downtown.
Great, thank you very much. Donna Coles, followed by Scott Hyten. All right. Scott Hyten, followed by Bonnie McClure.
I'm Scott Hyten. My wife and I and family have lived in San Carlos for about 20 years, a little over 20 years. I would just like to ask that the City Council get off the dime and make a decision and stick with it. I know you guys are not the council that was here eight years ago when this started, but I'd like to see this finished. I'd like to see something happen. We've seen lots of decisions made. These decisions are reversed, you get pressure from, you know, neighbors nearby, you know, go back and look at something else. You've got a recommendation, a very strong recommendation from your citizen committee. You've got a very strong recommendation from your staff, the experts that you paid to do this. Let's move on this. Let's finally bring this to an end. I'm aware that there are concerns that the community has, and we have to look at the greater good of the community overall. And to my neighbors, my good friends and neighbors in the Highlands Park area, I certainly appreciate your concern, and we should mitigate those as well as we can. My wife and I live down...
Sir, you could speak to us, I apologize. You can say the same thing.
My wife and I live down in the L'Oreal neighborhood. We live right across from L'Oreal Park with our kids. For a number of years back, we endured the grade separation. We were one of the opponents of the grade separation, which the City Council and the citizens of San Carlos agreed was better to do for the entire community, even though it was going to inconvenience us. And for three years, we went through construction hell. We were wrong. After all was said and done, the grade separation was completed, the entire community has benefited from it. The council made a decision, they stuck with it, the community supported them, even though those of us who were most directly affected by it objected to it. In the end, it was a good thing. There are very few people who criticize that now. Few people who live right next to the separation might object. Please make this decision. Please do what we need for the benefit of the entire community. It is a crime to have millions of dollars paid to our parks to support our parks every year and then to put signs out telling our children they can't play on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie McClure, followed by Lynda Morrissey.
Speaker, I agree with the former speaker. I've lived in this town practically 50 years. I coached at Highlands 30 years ago. I'm a hiker. I know that that was, the trails were the top of the recent survey. I also know that we've got a million dollars dedicated for fields that was given to us. Let's get those fields built and pay attention to what our experts say. Barry has had hearings on this for a long time. I've been going to parks meetings for 20 years, and I've listened to all the reports from the fields. I am not a member of the Fields Committee, so I feel neutral on this, and I'm an environmentalist. But let's build that field.
Thank you. Lynda Morrissey, followed by Rod Lair.
Hi, my name is Lynda Morrissey. I live at 109 Dundee Lane, which is near Highlands Park, and my daughter's an avid soccer player. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. The press release that the city recently issued about bringing this issue before the council again listed a lot of different neighboring communities that have turf, but I think that list was a little misleading because the majority of those on the list were for high schools or community colleges. So I really think we need to do a better job of working with our school district to come up with a solution and not do this at Highlands Park. It's a community park. It may have been intended for sports initially, but our community, our citizens, have really turned it into something else. There's a lot more going on there besides sports. So I think I really would like it if the City Council would stick with their decision from two years ago that hasn't moved at all, and stop wasting time and resources, and keep it green, and find a better solution with the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod Lair, followed by Mark Bressler.
Hi, I'm Rod Lair. I've been involved, I've been in San Carlos for 30 years, and since the 80s, I've been involved in the fields, in improvement of the fields. And I was part of the Citizens Committee. And I feel over the last few years, we've had, we've had a lot of misinformation, some came out tonight, some misdirection, we took paths that were the wrong paths and misdirected. Surprisingly, the Fields Committee did not vote on grass versus synthetic turf. There wasn't a vote about that. It was a vote about location, and the majority of the Citizens Committee voted for Highlands. Last time I checked, there's two fields at Highlands. The upper field, it's called the stadium field, actually was improved, helped to be improved by the athletic sports organizations, baseball and soccer. That field started as basically weeds. Sports organizations, along with the city, spent a lot of money, a lot of time, improving that to the grass that it is today, planted the trees, planted the shrubs, and did the improvements, which definitely made it a greener area. I really don't buy the argument that synthetic, there's two fields. If you want grass, you live in that area where somebody wants to walk. The upper stadium part is a beautiful area to walk in, it's a beautiful area, you can have a picnic up there. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask you to look at this as an issue for children. This is the children of our community, and look at the future. There were young children here tonight, they're all gone now, but their future's at stake here, their ability to play sports in a city that is a city of good living. I would ask you right now to consider taking the high road on this. Don't, don't focus on special interest groups, but take the high road and focus on the future of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Bressler, followed by Mike Aher.
Hi, I'm Mark Bressler. I've been, my family and I have been living in San Carlos since '95. I've got two children who have been active in sports for a number of years, and one of the, one of the challenges we've had, particularly in the last few years, is getting adequate sort of time on the field. And over the years, the field conditions have, in general, gotten, have moved, or have deteriorated. I think that, at this point, it is really important for the city to reach some sort of closure on this issue, and the recommendations from Commissioner Weiss seem very sound and compelling to me in terms of, one, the choice of Highlands as the most appropriate field to focus on, both for its size, its location, the parking, and its having lighting as well. I do think that the long-term arguments, environmental and financial, for turf are very strong. I think one of your earlier speakers referred to this being something for a group of elite athletes, although many of our children would like to think of themselves as elite athletes, is definitely not the case, but it is, athletic activity and physical activity is a very important part of their growing up, their physical health, and their becoming citizens as they become adults. So at this point, I really very much strongly encourage you to move forward with this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Aher, followed by Richard Dash.
Good evening. I'm Mike Aher, I live on 100 Dundee Lane. I followed the issue for a number of years, met with a few of you. Somebody pointed out tonight that there's a master plan in the works. It'd be great to see it. Let's have a plan for the parks before we make the single largest expenditure in how many years. So there's a lot of people using the fields for athletic purposes today. Are there people that are going unserved? What did your survey tell you? You know, when you surveyed the residents, they said, "I want better trails, I want better restrooms, I want, you know, playground equipment." There's a lot of people being served today by organized sports, my kids included. Who's going unserved? You know, somebody's got a, you know, $1.7 million in their pocket that's burning a hole, I guess. I think we need to, you know, ask ourselves, what our plan is, what do all the citizens want? Not just a very organized vocal minority who are able to get back onto the calendar over and over again. You know, listen to the survey of all the residents, please, and double-check the facts. Lots of facts from both sides are, they're not, they're not being backed up. You know, Richard did a great job of showing another way to look at the finances that, embarrassingly, has not been done by this city. So I urge you to please, you know, ask all the citizens, have a plan, and double-check your facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Dash, followed by Esther Klein.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'd like to ask you one question. When I got here, I was going to make a big speech, but I was told I didn't have to. The flag would be taken down before sundown. I got on the bike about a half an hour ago, and I rode over to the senior citizens pavilion there, and there was a flag still up. Why? You want to answer me? Would you, Mayor? Why, why are we silent? Everybody was talking a minute ago. I've been over to some of those places, I've seen them kids dying. I got nothing more to say. The flag should be taken down. It's a rule.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Esther Klein, followed by Steve Keim.
Hello, I'm Esther Klein of 112 Dundee Lane. The best return on investment is to approve Tierra Linda based on Mr. Weiss's own remarks. Mr. Weiss said that if Tierra Linda were renovated, the TL students would use it instead of city fields. That would free up city fields for other usage, which is a goal. Also, it decreases overall traffic in the TL area, which right now is a problem at pickup time. The TL students would just stay at TL for their practices, and you wouldn't have the rush of parents picking them up at the same time. The same goes for Central. Replacing asphalt with plastic is not as much of an environmental negative, and you don't need a full-size field for practice. Mr. Weiss said that several teams can practice on a full-size. Artificial turf on Highlands has been discussed and rejected by the San Carlos City Council. Highlands neighborhood cannot handle increased usage. Mr. Weiss said that San Carlos High was desired for an athletic field when the San Carlos High School was torn down, but a neighborhood was also built with Aberdeen as the single access road to that community. If the city had wanted there to be a sports complex, they would have, instead of having a... a sports complex, they opted to have added property values, added property taxes of Highlands community. When, when games are going on, Aberdeen is inaccessible, unadvocatable, and increasing the use will increase the chances of health and safety risks in accessing homes with many, many young children, including my own three. More and more experts are saying that we need to give our children downtime. Instead of scheduling more games, we need to fly kites with our children on the natural grass of Highlands Park, of which San Carlos has precious few parks compared per capita. As the attached notes indicate, there are plenty of plastic fields in which our soccer players can play on, but there aren't enough natural grass fields. Do I have more time or? Okay.
You're just out of time.
Okay. Recent scientific studies have shown that arti-
I'm sorry, you are just, you're, you are out of time. I'm sorry if I didn't say that as clearly as I should have.
Oh. Can I just say real quick that, I'm sure that there can be mowers that are made environmentally better, and if there aren't, that's a wonderful business opportunity for somebody out there because it doesn't seem like, it seems like we could have better mowers.
Okay. Thank you very much. Steve Keim followed by Adam Alberdi.
Good evening. Just wanted to tell you I'm a resident of San Carlos and I'm in favor of the turf fields. I want my kids to play on them. I want them to have the chance to play on the field. And in listening to the statements tonight, I just wanted to correct a statement that was made by a gentleman earlier about the pitchers this Saturday. He's correct that the field was closed, the grass part of it, for re-turfing or adding this seed. But there were games going on. I was there with my kids at 1:45 for baseball. There were a lot of cars, but there were fields open, and so it wasn't just because of tennis courts or-
Thank you. Adam Alberdi followed by Wes Stanbaugh.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for taking a few moments to hear my, that's the one that works, pardon me. I'm breaking your technology. Again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm here, Adam Alberdi, 343 Manzoni Avenue. I'm only a three-year San Carlos resident, but that does put this thing to context because when I first moved to this community from San Francisco, field discussions were still going on. And we're here three years later, and here we're not, here we are tonight talking about, you know, politics being the art of the possible. A famous economist, John Galbraith, had an opposite statement to that. And he said that politics wasn't the art of the possible, it's the choice between the disastrous and the unpalatable. Well, I think everybody would agree that grass is preferable. No argument here. I represent my family. I'm on the Little League Board of Directors, volunteer position. I coach soccer, Little League. My son practices on asphalt, not grass, Farm League. We need to really look at what, what the challenge here is. And my understanding of the challenge is that there's not enough playing space. And that's not this council's fault. It's really an institutional problem. Many councils created it. We don't have adequate field space. We didn't get it from the developers when they came here. So what do we do? We have three choices. We can turn kids away from the sports. We can build more fields by closing out open spaces or paving over baylands or, or taking away people's houses. Or we can increase the playing field, the playing space we have on the fields we have today. There's been a lot of subterfuge tonight, a lot of discussion of tangential issues. You know, we'll keep the, the goal in mind, and that is, you know, how do we, how do we fill our community's needs? You know, my kid is on farm, he's an elite athlete, much to my dismay, he's a rather poor athlete, but he's having a great time out there. Isn't that what it's about? I mean, a lot of folks from, from youth sports here, we're not out there to make elite statements, we're out there to have fun with our community members. We're out there to, to bond with fellow coaches, other parents, and our kids are having a great time interacting with each other. That's all we want. We want to continue that. We want that to be available for everybody. I'm sorry that we haven't built adequate field spaces over the years, but, you know, now we have a problem we have to deal with, and I urge the council to get to the business of dealing with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Will Stanbaugh followed by John Jacobson.
Evening, Will Stanbaugh. Longtime San Carlos resident. In fact, the area in which we're talking about used to be my high school, graduated in 1982. The weed-grown stadium field was my football field for a number of years, and it's actually probably the best field that we have in town at, at this point in time. Same people, same faces, same spends, one way or another. I'm here again, eight years in a row, to support the staff and their decision, the committee that I sat on and their decision. You know, it's, it's been looked at with magnifying glass in certain cavities that I don't think anybody wanted to go, but it's been looked that way. So I really don't want to be redundant. We do have an opportunity here, and I, to the Highlands group as well, we have, the people that I played for when I was a kid, I grew up playing soccer here. When I grew up playing soccer here, we had 450 soccer players, and we had more fields. Site seven, which is all now houses, had a field and two baseball fields, Crestview and a number of other fields around the city. Now, just in the soccer program alone, we have over 2,000 kids and less field space. So obviously turf makes sense. I'm purest. If I could play on grass at Crystal Palace, it's an inch and a half, and it's green, and no dirt and rocks, I'd love to play on it. But we don't have that opportunity here. We just have too many kids playing on it. So turf is what makes sense, and at Highlands Park it makes sense, or Highlands Sports Complex, because it is. We have three baseball diamonds, two full-size fields, play structure, snack shack, tennis courts, parking, so we actually, and we have a trail that goes all the way around it. So we actually have an opportunity to have the best of all. We have the hiking trails. We have everything there. We could have, we could have some synthetic turf so that we could play, and we have the grass in the back so that people can fly kites and barbecue and have their picnics. So again, I didn't want to be redundant, but we're here to support you guys as well as you guys. So whatever we can do, you let us know.
Thank you. John Jacobson followed by Martin Kirk. And then that's the last speaker slip I have. So if anybody else would like to speak, please grab a slip now and pass it up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, gentlemen, ladies. I am a five-year resident in San Carlos, coming from South Africa, very involved in sports, both baseball and soccer. But I want to tell you what happened today out on the soccer field. I am the present coach of Central Boys Soccer Team. We went up to Crestview to practice. The boys and girls practiced together, and we normally split the team in half-half. When we got up there, there was a U-18 New Zealand team that were practicing, that was gonna play a game at 5 o'clock. And we had to go up to them and say to them, "This is the little time that we have, you know, move to that corner of the field." We had four teams practicing at the same time on one field. And not only that, it was a national team that you're looking at here, and we had to chuck them into the corner. But I think the, the big picture here is, is it's about the children. Please, baseball, soccer, think of the children present and that have to come. And it's not about a complex, it's about a facility. I've played in fields in South Africa that have been donated by Americans, and yes, they were turf fields. So think about it. Do the right thing for the children. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker slip I have is Martin Kirk.
Hello, I'm Martin Kirk, resident of San Carlos for 10 years, also a member of the AYSO Board. And I'd like to thank Mr. Weiss and his staff and fully support turf. And I fully support the idea that children should be using the most of our city property. And I think if any of these surveys that were done to see, you know, hiking and flying kites, et cetera, if that survey was done with kids included, I bet you soccer, baseball would, would most likely be number one on that list. And I just kinda want to tell a story about why, why, like the idea of turf. When it rains, I think most of us know you have to call the field hotline to see if the fields are open or not. I don't set my alarm clock that morning because my little boy wakes up well before and sees if, if it's raining. And if it's raining, he wakes me up and he says, "Dad, gotta call the hotline if we're gonna play our game today or not." And he gets very disappointed if we don't get to play. So I know turf, it goes a long ways in that manner. But overall, I think this is the support of our children and our community, and I fully support it.
Thank you. All right, with that, there's no other public comment. And I turn to council for discussion. Anybody want to start off? Councilor Lott?
That was a whole lot of fun reading that. And just got some, I wanted to show you some emails that I've been getting. So haven't done a survey, haven't asked anybody, but this is what folks have been emailing. This is email in favor. This is email opposed. And these are people who really love tennis. So there was a question about should we pave everything with asphalt in color green? I think these people would love that. I've, I gotta be upfront, but I don't have an emotional horse in this race. I don't have kids. I played soccer all through high school and all through college. I love the sport. I played in memorials when I worked at Discovery Channel, got creamed by a bunch of guys on embassy teams in DC. I love the sport, but what we have in front of us are competing very legitimate interests. So first, I'm gonna acknowledge everybody who spoke. Thank you for sharing. I took notes, and I've really tried to be as open as I can to listening to what's going on. This is the committee report. It's got all of the minutes in it. Thank you, Barry. It was fun reading. Here are the three things that came out, values and priorities. Number one, put a priority on solutions that increase capacity when, time of year, youth and adult competitive sports are most active. Two, provide recreational opportunities for all citizens. No one should be occluded due to no space. Three, develop solutions that have the broadest benefit to all San Carlos residents. That was what this report and all of this work went to do. Put a priority on solutions that increase capacity. You go through this again, one of the things that folks have been talking about is we want to do more grass. I love playing on grass. I think everybody in the room would love to play on grass. According to this and the report from the majority, natural turf will not add additional There's been some questions about can we buy some land? Not today. Fiscally, it's not something that we can do. I've gotten some emails about fiscal concerns. How can you spend money on this when we've got real fiscal concerns? I think it's been mentioned several times that the money we are looking at for any field improvement or anything else is one-time money. Some of it is Measure G, the San Carlos voters put it on ourselves, that we wanted to set aside money for parks and recreation improvements. We have a one-time gift from Palo Alto Medical Foundation. That is the money we're gonna deal with if it, we're, we're not dealing with questions between public safety and, and soccer fields. During the campaign, I had a chance to walk through a bunch of neighborhoods. We were shown some photographs of parking issues. During the campaign, I happened to walk through and talk to some of the neighbors in some of the more highly-used areas, and they described, how shall we say this, unneighborly attentions that some of the people who are parking, trash in their front lawn. And these are real. These are, these are things that we need to address. If you're gonna use the fields and you're gonna use the facilities, I think we all need to recognize that we are all neighbors. People who live around fields are people. They are our neighbors, and we need to take care of them. Simultaneously, I think everybody who lives near fields also recognizes that we got kids, we want them to play. Going through this report, there was a lot of discussion about soccer. According to this, it looked like greater than half of the organized sports participants are from AYSO. And it looked like the bulk of those people participating were essentially 12 and under, maybe 14 and under. There's stretches everywhere else, but that's what I kinda got, the bulk of. So when we're looking at this, I am looking at, and a number of folks have said, "Think about the kids." Well, it seems like the majority of what we're trying to push for was kids. There's been questions about being green. I applaud that, I stand by it. But being green means a number of other things. While greenhouse gases are something to be extremely concerned about, and we need to do everything we can to reduce them. Water conservation, keeping things out of the landfill, and reducing maintenance and reducing what we need to spend on our other fields is also part of being green. I, I will, as part of the council, I will take some blame in that when we directed, when we decided to go and negotiate for Heather, I, I, you know, with, honest, just, I have great admiration for Bob Landzone and for all the staff who went and the folks who represented the school board, but I think this was a discussion that should have been elected official to elected official. When you send in the lawyers, it's probably the last thing you want to do in terms of negotiating a contract. I think in hindsight, if it had been elected officials who are actually on the hot seat to do this hard work, we may have had something different. But there were some things that fell apart during the discussions. I also think that had it been elected officials in the room, maybe some of the issues could have been clarified. There's two reports that came out of this thing. One is a majority report, the other is a minority report. The one thing that is in common with both reports is that they both talk about Tierra There was also another report in here that came out Halloween of 2001, so we can go back, how far have we really been talking about this issue? But in Halloween 2001, the Mahady report inside here, the very first and highest priority they said was convert Crestview to a lighted synthetic field. Crestview in here had the highest factored usage. So I'm putting all of this together to say, where do I stand? We have some one-time money, we have a chance to improve some fields. I would like to see, overall, the ability for kids to go out and play improved. Highlands is a good place to go. I am, I don't believe I'm gonna say this because I'm, I think the negotiations with the school board were difficult, but I will entertain the notion of going back for one shot. And I would probably recommend to the council, post discussion, I may make a motion for this, that we go back to the school board specifically to talk about Tierra Linda with the idea of saying, "If it's not done in 45 days, this is done." We have a number of people who have said, "Why haven't we explored it?" The one thing I do like about Tierra Linda is it, you know, again, going through the reports, it is not a field that we're using if the school kids are using city fields. It's the one place I can see that we're actually going to do what Priority One was, which was increase capacity. If Tierra Linda is off the map and we don't have that capacity, I, I don't know that simply adding turf to Highlands is the best way to go. Not opposed to it, but I would like to say, I, I'm willing to give it one more college try with the school board, but I'd like to exhaust that possibility before we go there.
Councilor Lott? Councilor Gokhan?
First thing I wanted to point out, before I get going with my comments, which I'll try to keep pretty brief, is on our staff report, at the very top, it gives synthetic turf versus natural turf. And I would just point out to the council that where it shows Highlands, it has basically 1.7 million for installation and acquisition, and then 40,000 for 10-year maintenance, and then the total is still 1.7 million. It should be a figure more like, what'd that be? 1.7 plus 40, I have here, about 1.74 instead of 1.7. Does everybody see where I am?
Yeah.
It's actually, the actual figures for the public is 1.693,886 dollars, adds 40,000, and it still shows in the staff report as that same amount, so.
Through the tier also, the second line is also not added together, so Tierra Linda would be also $40,000 higher.
Okay.
And the new 5.3%.
So a little error in the math there, but, and that gives me a segue into my first point, which is just looking, you know, people talk about we have this one-time money, and it was intoned that the one-time money is for synthetic turf. It is not. It's for athletic fields. They could be real turf, or they could be synthetic turf, either one. So I first wanted to point that out. And then, if we go out, what I did is I, a little more simple, and just on a notepad here than what was presented to us, but initially, synthetic is less expensive, it looks like. If you go out 10 years, and synthetic would be about $440,000 more. If you go out another 10 years, it's gonna be 1.56 million more. And that's simply because, you know, Barry's told us over and over again, if you put in a good, real turf field, it can last you indefinitely, as long as you take care of it. The thing with synthetic turf, I, being a, you know, a former wrestler, I compare it to a wrestling mat. A wrestling mat, you either have to recondition it every five years, or throw it away and go get a new one. And synthetic turf is the same thing. It's basically made out of the same material. With a synthetic field, you've gotta continually recondition, cut out spots that are worn out and so forth, or in 10 years, replace the whole thing. And so you're gonna have that bump-up cost that, you know, and I just used consistent dollars. I didn't inflate the numbers for the future. I just said, well, if it costs 1.7 to buy it one time, in 10 years from now, it's gonna cost another 1.7, and 10 years again, 1.7. So if you, as you just go out, you can see that you're gonna spend more money on synthetic than you will real turf. This is obviously, you know, it's a really hard decision, and I think that's why nothing's been done. And perhaps I would be more blunt about working with the school board. It was more than difficult, and nearly impossible. I, you know, fought our staff for giving it the old college try, but I think it was very, very difficult, and made unnecessarily so, in my opinion. We're a community, we should be trying to work together, and I don't think we got the cooperation from the school board that we needed for something that's a community problem. The kids belong to, you know, ostensibly, everyone. The schools and us work together, we have in the past, to take care of that need, and I didn't see the cooperation from, from the school board. I may take some heat from that, but that's the truth. That's the way I look at it. And I'm just gonna be flat-out and frank, I did not appreciate the lack of cooperation. Omar, if you wanna make the recommendation for TL in 45 days, I'd support you on it, just to give it one more try. I don't see any difference now versus what I saw when we were first looking at this, and when I went around and looked at all the fields. And what I looked at was, you know, Mr. Weiss talked to us about safety first, and, you know, keeping fields in play. And so I went out one, one day, and looked at all the fields, all in the same day, to see what, in my opinion, the conditions were. You know, I'm not a maintenance worker, I'm, you know, unscientific, but I looked at all the fields, and in my opinion, the two worst fields in the city, in this order, were Tierra Linda was by far the worst. Next was, in my opinion, was Crestview, and the upper field at Highlands. And actually, and between those, it, to me, it was a toss-up. The upper field at Highlands, somebody said it was the athletic users, the teams that, you know, put that in, and took it from weeds to what it is today. And no offense to the people who put all in, the hard work, but I think it kinda shows. The substrate to that field is, is not what it needs to be, and that's why the field is, undulates and has potholes, if you will, in it, and drainage problems and so forth. I think we could get a good bang for the buck if we just tore that field out and put in whatever, whether it's real turf or artificial. And Crestview's, you know, it's got drainage problems and so forth. So I guess where I'm going with this is yes, we have one-time money, let's get the biggest bang for a buck. I could see going back to the school board and school district, give it a 45-day shot if that doesn't work. In my opinion, the reason I ask so many questions about Crestview is because I think Crestview's the field to go to. I do not think Highlands is. And I think whether fields are closed, open, or whatever, I've seen pictures like this twice now, of the issues at this neighborhood. And with or without artificial turf, there are problems up there with traffic in and out, parking and so forth. And it is, you know, it's a blessing and a curse, but it's a, it is a park that has many uses between baseball, tennis, people just playing around, you know, unsupervised, and then organized sports. There's a lot going on up there. And I think the, also was compelling was, if we apply county standards, our own standards to parking, yeah, it has more parking spaces than any other of the fields we're looking at, but it also has a lot of other things going on there, demanding the use of that parking. So again, just, just to summarize very quickly, we have one-time money, let's get the most out of it. Omar, if you wanna make the, the motion that we go back to the school board, TL, for 45 days, give it a try, I'll support you. And if not, I'd see us going to Crestview. Thank you.
So I think the overall goal here, we could all agree, is probably for the children and a lot of other people, we need to increase the availability of playtime at our fields. I think we all agree on that. I think the field committee made a pretty good recommendation, Barry makes a pretty good recommendation, but it still is up to us as council, and I as one-fifth of the council, to go back and make the best decision for our town. And so I looked at three components here. And they're not all that clear, but it does lead me to a conclusion. A lot of discussion tonight covered my first item, which is overall safety to our children and environmental safety, and sustainability and so forth, that whole category. I've talked to a lot of people who have played on turf, a lot of children. I know that Redwood City has, I believe there are eight fields that are both at some of their schools, including elementary schools and parks, in which they have turf, children play at. And we also have turf at our two high schools, which San Carlos kids attend, Sequoia and Carlmont. And there's a lot of turf fields of, when we, when I go to seminars, I've been to two in five months, but I do a lot of talking, there's a lot of dinners, and a lot of talking I do to other council people, and other park and rec people, and other citizens in other cities. And there's a lot of cities that have turf, and kids play on it. And there's, you know, they get a little rash, and they get a burn, and there's some pellets in their shoes when they go home. You know, grass is best, but turf works, and, and actually, I think there's kind of an excitement that kids have on playing on turf. It's a little different kind of play, it's a little faster and so forth, but it definitely does work. And I've made the conclusion that from all the information I have now, what I've seen, I mean, we have a track record, that may change, but the track record up to this point is that turf is safe for children. Environmental is not as black and white or green. You know, people use the word plastic, yes it is. How you make it, maybe it's not the best, it doesn't give out oxygen, saves a heck of a lot of water. I did talk to, and Barry, you talked to the same guy, he never mentioned you call, I hope he didn't mention I call. I talked to the park superintendent, went on the web, called up Parks and Rec for Redwood City, and got in contact with the superintendent. And I said, you know, I remember about a year ago, you only had a couple fields, now you have many more, you know, what's going on? And I asked a half a dozen questions. And one of the questions I asked was, what's one of the things you learn most about over time, that you didn't realize in the beginning? And this Gary Homer mentioned that they have been really concentrating on the city, on groundwater and water quality in, in their storm drains, and what flows to the bay. And he said that a lot of their surveying that they did at Redmorden Park, in analysis and looking in storm drains, was a lot of that watering, it flows through sand and soil and with fertilizers and so forth. The water is a murky color. And that since they have put in turf at Redmordens, I believe there's two fields that they've done, the visual, this is not scientific data, I'll grant you that, he says it's crystal clear in all our storm drains now, of that water that comes through the storms, off the streets and so forth, right next to, and they were monitoring, because they've been very concerned, again, with water quality and so forth. So, and then, this last weekend, I attended six sessions. One was with Senator Joe S. Minion, and a few people from the water quality boards and associations through the state of California. Talked a lot about water, and the availability of water, and what it's gonna cost, and how it flows through the delta, and bay height, and all sorts of things. And one of our senator's last comments in relationship to conservation was something like, hey, you guys better start thinking more about turf. Two cities entirely in San Mateo County. And his thinking, of course, was only in the segment of water conservation. But again, it's an element. So that's why I'm saying the environmental stuff, whether or not we're long-ways and how we do it, I think there's no perfect worlds. There's a handful of things that are washed, a handful that are better, and a handful that are worse, I guess, with the environmental. So that's my first area. Second, which I think is very critical with our city right now, it's also an area that I kind of more gravitate to, because of my experience, is the financial aspect of turf. Some of the analysis that I've seen, and even this evening, one of the things that's missing is the, a couple ways to explain it, the, how we maximize return on our assets, return on our parks, how we utilize, maximize, utilization is a word that I used for five years in costing out semiconductor fabs. And when you run a fab, you gotta run it round the clock. I'm not recommending that for our fields. But it's a matter of investments, it's a matter of maintenance, it's a matter of amortization on how long this stuff's gonna last. But it's a matter of if we could double the availability of playtime with a certain amount of cost, just that factor makes a big difference in the financial return. And I'm very much, not only with Parks and Rec, but whether or not it's a truck, or a police car, or whatever asset, or capital investment we make to our sewer system, we need to make sure we maximize that return. Or survival's gonna be really tough. And parks and fields is one of our most precious assets that we have in the city. And the last item is, bear with me, but it's a real tough area. It's, and having been on planning and residential review, where we look at fit, and I'm talking about how does it fit into the neighborhood, how does it fit into the park? I think we need to look at both. My wife and I spent our first six or seven years on Cedar Street facing Burton Park. This was, started in 1979, and so I'll qualify, because I think there's some changes that have occurred. But we were young and a little naive, and we thought about, hey, how do we, do we really wanna buy a house across from a park? But there were benefits, and we were 30 or 40 feet, our lawn to their lawn, just across the street. But there was a playground, it was the old stuff, there were tennis courts we used, there was Aquana's building, we did dancing. There were the playing fields, there was walking around the field. There was literally just watching a softball game while I washed pots and washed dishes. And there was truly a value of living across from a park. But there were also cars parked in front, there was some trash, there was a softball, you know, hit against the house once in a while. And I think, of course, that is something that has changed, because when we look at Highlands, there's a lot more cars, there's a lot more parking, there's a lot more kids. There are these snacks, we had oranges, now, these kids, we have to train these kids, when they rip off the label, they rip it in half and take the ingredients out, and now throw that little tab away, because you'll find those tabs trashing our parks all over the place. So I think there is an intrusion, and maybe that's a strong word, but I'll use it, I think we do need to look at traffic and trash, and how we impact a neighborhood. But from my own experience, many homes live looking at a park or near a park, and I would have to say, if you had a choice to live next to one, or not near one, I think a lot of people in the city respect the value of being near or at one of our parks, because we have great, great parks. But I do think we need to manage, because I'm saying, I'm qualifying the fact, I do realize things have changed from the 80s, the early 80s, when I lived on Cedar Park. But it gives me, you know, viewpoint of what I valued, and what we used as a family. So with, with that, you know, plastic isn't that good. I was in a Prius this weekend, so a lot of plastic in a Prius, there's a lot of plastic in our strollers and our high chairs, I mean, we use plastic in lots of things, and now we're using it for turf. And it works. Grass is better, but turf works. And Highlands has the highest availability of playtime, it's got lights, it's got the most parking. When we, we, the residents and the city moved there, all on the same day, we had residence and we had a park. And I am very much in favor of, getting along with the schools is no problem, I know those people very well. We actually did try twice with the schools. I pride myself on doing research and moving quickly, and I would like to move this evening with turf at Highlands.
Vice Mayor Grisilli?
Um, Mr. Grokot and Mr. Lewis and I were, were at the last few meetings on this. We weren't at the beginning because the previous council handed it off to us in 2005. Um, I too read that Citizens Advisory booklet more than once, I think, to make sure that I was, what I was reading. It's, when we had the vote in, in May of, of 2006, I was, I voted to put, uh, artificial surface at Heather because I felt that Highlands was, uh, used a great deal, I felt that that neighborhood was impacted and I wanted to try to spread it out a little bit, even though it's only half a block up, there was plenty of, I thought, I shouldn't say plenty, adequate parking for what was necessary and the field was going to give us, uh, the return that we needed to have. In subsequent years, we've tried to work with the school district on, uh, working out a lease and working out some agreement with that. Unfortunately, it didn't work. Uh, I think we've made every effort and, and they have too, I'll, I'll give them credit to try, whatever area, I was not in the, in negotiations, but I will give them credit that both sides tried to come to an agreement, uh, and weren't able to. I don't feel that 45 more days is going to help us, uh, in that situation because the school board members and the city council members here haven't changed or will not change in the next 45 days, at least unless somebody decides not to be here or there. Um, by taking Heather out of the mix, uh, in effect, you've also taken out three or four other schools, in my opinion, including Tierra Linda, because going back to Tierra Linda, I don't see any difference between Heather and Tierra Linda. Now, you could say it's a middle school and maybe the school district felt that because it wasn't an elementary school, maybe that was the issue, that they were, a strong issue for them. I don't know, I wasn't there and I can't speak for them. But again, we're dealing with the school district again. Um, the second, uh, choice that I had in 2006 was Highlands, but again, as I said, I went for, for Heather. The three items that, that, that I sort of hang my hat on, and Councilman Royce indicated one of them, is, is the water usage. Um, I thought water was going to be an issue in this, in this state in the 1990s when I was in business, I, I kept hearing that we are gonna, we have enough water, but we're not necessarily using it right. Now that we've gotten into the next century, I'm hearing that we may not even have enough water. Um, and, and I'm not sure that we're still using it right. And that's a very important thing for, in my mind, and again, as Councilman Roy said, there's a lot of environmental issues that go on both sides, you have to weigh them, weigh them both on, on positives and negatives, uh, to put in an artificial surface rather than grass. Um, the primary, uh, issue of the report, and I think the primary issue of why, uh, the staff has presented this to us tonight, is again, trying to get playing time for our youth and for people who want to, uh, engage in, in various, uh, sports. According to the statistics, and again, it's been quoted before, there's over 2,000, I guess soccer, according to, to our staff's reports, which I, I can't discount, considering they keep track of who's playing, over 2,000 soccer, uh, people, young people and over 1,500, 1,600, uh, baseball and softball. Now, some of those obviously could be the same. So, uh, the 3,900 might be lowered by a percentage because some children might play both sports. Another 1,500 play adult softball and almost 2,000 attend camps and classes every year at our fields. And there are, they are scattered, I know Burton has many of them, but the classes and camps do go to the other fields. Um, I look at the other cities in our, in our area, Redwood City being the, the primary point, uh, there was a speaker tonight who indicated that a lot of the lists here are high schools and colleges, uh, that have put in these school, uh, these, uh, these fields, I agree with that. But there are also in, in Redwood City, basically six or seven or five or six of them at least that are just regular fields. Um, they have just put in a, a new field at, uh, Sandpiper Elementary School in Redwood Shores. Um, I, I didn't see, and I read meticulously the papers every day and try to keep up on what's going on. Apparently, it either got by everybody who didn't realize it or it's part of Redwood City's, uh, situation where, again, they're looking at, uh, reusing water down in Redwood Shores anyway, and this was just another advantage to not being able to use more that you would have to have. Um, I guess basically I haven't really changed my mind so much on the specific item of more playing time. And as I said, I would still rather have it at Heather, uh, but that apparently is not going to happen. And so Highlands would be the next, uh, location that I would, uh, advocate that we do this. We have the funds, as, as Councilmember Ahmad said, it's, they are not funds that will go to any, or can go to any other source except Park and Recreation and for our fields and, and in that area. Uh, if they were, uh, I don't think we'd be having this discussion considering our, our budget situation. So at this point in time, I'm willing to support the staff recommendation to, uh, put artificial surface at Highlands.
Um, a lot of the councils vetted a lot of the, the, the issues and concerns, I share a, a lot of those things. One, one clarification for everybody, Councilmember Ahmad mentioned the emails that he's gotten, all the emails go to all the council members, so all the council members received all of these emails, that, that's not an individual thing. Um, also, the progress seminar this weekend, that Councilmember Royce mentioned, I think four of the five council members were at that seminar this weekend, so we heard those seminars on water and water conservation and those issues as well. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that there's, there's, uh, information that's getting to the whole council, even though everybody may, may not have spoken to that. Um, the, uh, you know, Councilmember Grisilli and I both, uh, voted for Heather synthetic turf before. And I, I truly believe that was the best solution or I wouldn't have voted for it. Um, I, I think it, you know, I saw a benefit for the city and for the schools. Um, I saw an, a U-10 field that increased to a U-19 field, uh, which meant that it did increase participation without the addition of lights. Um, and I, and I thought it would also help vet, uh, the synthetic turf fear in the community then. I think there's, there's, uh, there's some fear about that, that synthetic, uh, surface that, you know, I've, I've played on it over the years. Um, I think I've been at every field meeting in the last eight years, um, that's existed on this, just about, sounds of one or two meetings I might have missed between Park and Rec, Fields, Commission, City Council. Um, and, and it's really with, uh, a lot of sadness that the, that the Heather field, um, hasn't happened. Um, never say never, but, um, again, I, in counterpoint to Councilmember Ahmad, elected officials talked about this for a really long time. I've been on the two plus two committee for over, uh, two years, I attended two plus two committees prior to that time when I was on the Park and Rec Commission. It's been a discussion amongst elected officials for, for years and years and years now. And, and, um, the, in, in those elected officials' discussions, the schools are always very positive about that improvement. I think they're a dedicated board, all trying to do the right thing. And we, we all have our own, uh, you know, experiences and concerns and, um, I think at the end of the day, it really came down to control of the field after 3 o'clock. It's, it's, it's pretty simple. But for us to invest $1.7 million in a field or any sort of a capital improvement on the behalf of the city, we can't give up control of that. Um, and, and really, that's, in my opinion, the central issue. And, um, we've brokered that field after 3 o'clock for years. Um, and it appears that that was going to change or not, was it going to be, going to be good enough to, to, if we improve the field? Then changed. Um, and we've been talking about this for a really long time, ever since we made the decision to go for Heather. It's been, what, nine months? Something like that? Um, it's really difficult to get two elected bodies together to move forward. Um, there's greater variables there, it's difficult enough for the city just to make decisions like this between staff and council. So I appreciate and I want everybody to appreciate the, the, the dynamic notion of getting the two bodies to work together. And, and I think actually there was a lot of good faith effort in that regard. With respect to Tierra Linda, many of these issues don't change. Um, in fact, it's a middle school, so they already use the field up till 5 o'clock, which means after 3 o'clock, we have no increased participation. Girl softball, I think there's over 500 members and maybe 500 or 600, and maybe underestimating that because I just don't want to overestimate. But it's a huge participation girl softball in this town and they use the Tierra Linda field and they maintain it. Everybody should understand the city has no agreement on the Tierra Linda field. We don't maintain it. Um, and again, in budgetary times, when we talk about adding the care and maintenance of a new facility, when staff is, you know, prepared to come forward to talk about taking a maintenance worker off of, uh, the fields, it's difficult to think about adding something. Um, and I don't know that there's any increased participation. So by my criteria, increased participation and control of the $1.7 million displacing perhaps some people that are currently using that field, um, that, the math doesn't work on that in any respect for the, what I consider to be the core criteria. It's, uh, you know, 45 days, in my opinion, it's not about locking people in a room and saying, come out with an answer. We've been, there's a lot of people that, we're, you know, public servants that are, are putting in a, a lot of effort to try and make this happen. That one hasn't happened yet. Who knows what will happen down the road? Right now, we can't make that happen. Um, to me, it's, again, with a lot of sadness that, that we haven't made zero headway in this. When I was on the Park and Rec Commission, I think it was over four years ago, we made a recommendation to council, um, and council still has done nothing in almost four years. So expediency is an issue, um, in this regard, and, um, people have been doing their best work. Um, Crestview is also a single purpose field, these other fields are multi-purpose fields. So, um, by improving one, we improve for more sports. So, uh, Crestview doesn't have that advantage or opportunity. And, um, obviously adding a standing field in town is, is a difficult conversation for anybody to have with any neighborhood. Um, I think the environmental issues are, they, they sort of net balance one another. I do think water crisis is coming for all of us. Redwood City used up the amount of water that they're allocated from the, um, San Francisco PUC and that's why they have to, they have to get into recycling and, and conservation measures. We could be headed down that same path. The San Francisco's in control of our water that we get from Hetch Hetchy, those fees are bound to increase as time goes on. So water consumption's an issue. Um, and I think the other issues balance one another out between pesticides and groundwater issues and, um, the synthetic turf, how it's made, how it's disposed of. Um, it all comes back to increased participation for kids on the fields. It's been the same issue for years and I, I, I would like to see us move forward and do something about that. Um, it is also, we do need, if we're going to make this degree of investment, we need to be able to control that investment. Um, and, you know, I like the idea of the schools being able to use it even during the inclement weather seasons, during the school day, but that wasn't, uh, that wasn't of, uh, good enough value, I guess, to move the Heather project forward. I do think we have to include the replacement costs of this, there's some discussion in this about being around $500,000 or $600,000. I think we should discuss about user fees to help us for those, for those, uh, replacement costs. Um, I think warranties, eight years, some may give us 10 years, but it's probably a useful life of a field like that. If you look at Carlmont today, is it seven-year-old field? I, um, six or seven years and it looks like it's got at least three or four more years in it, if not a half a dozen years in it. Um, there are, there are positive issues about synthetic turf as well, it's a lower impact surface than, um, than grass at times, although I would not argue that if we had all the fields in the world, we'd make them turf. Um, but to go from sand-based to soil-based, which, which is the only responsible way to, to replace this turf is just, it's cost prohibitive. The most efficient answer is, um, Highlands with a turf surface. And I think it's the best thing for the community. So with that, uh, if there's more council discussion, we can entertain a motion. Anybody would like to talk about these issues?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to, uh, direct staff to pursue the renovation of Highlands Park Lower Field with synthetic turf, subject to SEQA review, which is the California, just so everyone knows, because I hate acronyms, California Environmental Quality Act. So we have to go through, as Mr. Lanzone said earlier, we have to have that review before we do anything and compliance is applicable.
I'd like to second that.
Do you want, pardon me. Did you want to just read that whole recommendation? To return to the council for project consideration after the SEQA review? What, I apologize, Mr. Lanone, what are you reading?
I'm reading the recommendation on the staff report.
What, what page, I'm sorry?
Page one.
Page one. Okay, I'm reading the alternatives, I just read alternatives, so, sorry. Page one, the first paragraph? Which paragraph are you alluding to?
Under recommendation.
Recommendation, okay. I'll start there. I make a motion that we direct staff to pursue installing synthetic turf at Highlands Park Lower Field, Athletic Field, determine and perform the applicable level, uh, level of environmental review, SEQA, say SEQA, and then return to council with a recommendation for project approval reflective of the environmental review. And I'll only change the word approval to consideration. Consideration.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Second. Christine, any other discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would, just to clarify a couple of points, I, in no sense do I want to, uh, well, first, let me acknowledge, there have been a lot of people who worked on this fields report, there's been a lot of time and effort put on by the members of this council to try to get a deal done. I, I do want to acknowledge that. I absolutely do acknowledge that it was tough negotiating with the school board. Um, you know, we wanted a win-win negotiation and it's hard for legitimate competing interests to come up with that. Um, so, just to say, I do want to acknowledge that and...
Through the chair, and I'm not trying to create more trouble for us, but you have the right to do a replacement motion, you were, you indicated you wanted to make a motion, you have, that would take, we would go on that first if you want to do that, I mean, that's up to you.
It, it seems pretty clear where the, where the sentiment of the council is.
Yeah, I just, I just, I do appreciate that.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to point out, uh, I was listening very closely to, uh, Mr. Royce's and, uh, to, to me, it's not, it, I don't want this to be colored, at least in, in my respect, um, that, you know, it's artificial turf versus natural turf. I, I went through the numbers, math, you know, and showed the expenses, but I agree with Randy that, uh, you know, you maximize utilization. So if it costs you a little more, but you get more use out of it, then, then perhaps it's worthwhile spending more money. Um, the, the one area from his rundown that I would, um, where I'm struggling with, with the Crestview site, or excuse me, the, uh, the Highland site is fit, fit to the neighborhood and to the park. I think it, it fits the park fine. I, it, in, in that regard, I would more look at the upper field, again, because I think the upper field is in worse condition than, than the lower field. Um, but I don't think it fits the neighborhood. And that's what, the, the folks that brought this traffic, uh, photos of traffic and parking and so forth, that's, I, I don't think it fits the neighborhood. That's why I would look to, to TL before, when we were, when I was mayor and running these, uh, meetings, uh, I was looking at TL very strongly. I agree that, you know, I've already said, very frankly, working with the school board and school district just doesn't seem very possible. I was willing to give it 45 more days, but, uh, I don't see that from the council, so that's fine. The reason I would look at Crestview, quite frankly, is because I do think it would fit the neighborhood. I, I think as far as, well, maybe it's being used for one sport right now, we could open up the box. But it's on a major thoroughfare, being, you know, the very wide roadway and so forth, I could see traffic in and out of there being more easily handled than on a dead-end street. So I'm going to vote against it, that's why, because I don't think it fits the neighborhood. I'm not voting against artificial turf by any means, though.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, Christine?
Councilmember Ahmad?
No.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, we will move on to item number 10A. Uh, Bob, we need a motion.
Oh, yes.
Uh, through the chair, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, extend the meeting till 11 o'clock.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 10A, discussion of city participation in Harvest Nights Farmer's Market, May through September of 2008. Slightly less controversial subject.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of council. Uh, for the last five years, uh, the city has participated with the Chamber of Commerce and our Economic Development Division in a farmer's market from May through September. Uh, last year, uh, our participation, uh, was a booth from, uh, 5:00 to 7:00 PM, the first Thursday of each month. Uh, the involved staff work would include... The involved staff work would include some of our maintenance staff setting up and taking down the booth, and participation of a department head and a council member each of the five nights. Staff is recommending that we continue that format this year. We think that at the moment, that's doable, certainly in the current budget. If the budget cuts that the council imposes next week, change that. Obviously, we could look at a different arrangement after June.
All right, council, so I think before is whether we just want to do what we did last year. Booth from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and we help staff it the first Thursday of the month. How do you all feel? I'm sorry?
So moved.
One comment? Sorry? One comment, all right? Now's your opening.
I just like to add, I think having once a month is an excellent idea. But I also would encourage staff, council, show up more often. I talked to Cheryl about whether she'd share her booth. She'll share her booth. She'll share the front of her booth. But I think the more visibility that we have at this wonderful event, this is the minimum. This is where the formal will run a booth, but there's the informal part that I would like to recommend to my fellow councilmen.
Well, thank you for that informal advice. Any other comments? Do we need a motion on this?
No.
No? If we don't need a motion, everybody wants to nod their head, we're basically okay for this? All right. Good. Well, then, we're going to move on to the next item. Brian, consider yourself so anointed with that. View business 10B, consideration of approving the city's strategic plan and six-month objectives matrix.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. Before you this evening is a recommendation from staff to approve the new three-year strategic plan with its updates. This is actually the fifth draft of the city's strategic plan, so we've completed two years of the original three-year plan. We'll just run through this real quick. There wasn't any change with the city's mission statement. The city of San Carlos provides high-quality services and facilities in a fiscally sustainable, responsive, and friendly manner to foster a safe and healthy community. The vision statement, which was created at the previous strategic plan, was also unchanged. By 2012, the city of San Carlos will be a vibrant and thriving home, too, and destination for individuals, families, and businesses. This is a list of core values. They were not changed at the last strategic planning session either, so they remain unchanged. The three-year goals, changes here actually occurred. The enhanced internal and external communication and customer service three-year goal was removed by the city council, and that's not because the city council doesn't want to continue to pursue customer service and quality communication, both internally and with the public, but rather because they felt that the city had made significant improvements in that area over the first two years of the plan, and were wanting to focus the plan's direction, council's energy, as well as staff's energy, on a new goal of the plan, which is to plan for and implement long-term financial sustainability. Within the plan, there are 26 new six-month objectives. These objectives will be reported on monthly to the city council at city council meetings for the public to voice any improved involvement, and for the council to make any updates to the plan. The next strategic planning workshop is scheduled in September 2008, and I believe the city clerk said the 23rd, September 23rd, 2008. So that has been scheduled. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. The plan is attached to this.
That new Starburst that you got, it's fantastic. Yeah. A lot of finger paintings, but that's appreciated. Yeah. Yeah. Counsel, questions? Nope, we were all there. It was our last meeting, and that's, I think you faithfully put down everything we talked about. Any questions?
No, straight ahead. Should we adopt the strategic plan that says here?
Sure. Councilmember Grokot has commented. Excuse me?
Well, we could go ahead and make the motion, and under discussion, I could bring my.
Motion to the city council adopt the attached strategic plan, which includes a mission statement, vision statement, core values, new three-year goals, and a new six-month, and new six-month objectives.
Second. Great discussion.
I just wanted to bring up the item of Safe Rats to Score, see if we want to add anything further to that. It is under, someplace earlier in our packet, we were looking at some information about that, and that the Traffic and Circulation Commission is, in fact, that's what, it'll come up later when we look at the next item, the Traffic and Circulation does have that on their work plan. But I know I've been talking to Councilmember Royce about the issue of Safe Rats to Score. We do have some members of the community fairly organized to try and push that along. And I don't know if we wanted to add something to this work plan other than what we have.
So my two cents would be that, I think we've all got a lot of emails on it, and I think it's of interest to council. Anything can come on or off of this. What I would suggest is that if it comes forward, we get some sort of a proposal of what we want to add to this, and maybe something can be just flat-out added or something to come off, but then we consider it and vote it onto the matrix and move forward with it. But unless you have something specific you want to add tonight that you'd like us to discuss, I'm just saying, let's, I think we'd be game for something if we knew what the item was, or, you know, the great thing about this matrix is by who, when, all those things. If we have something, I think it'd be worth considering.
So I guess a question to mark here. When they did, they did do a presentation to the Traffic and Circulation. In that presentation, did they have any slides or indication of recommendations on priority things that we can do to help them? Or should we go back to Traffic and ask them to help us do that? Or what's your recommendation?
I think that they do have specific ideas and recommendations ranging anywhere from striping to curb cuts to sidewalks. All of which have, you know, budget implications. We've made grant applications, as a matter of fact, to help support some of those ideas. And we'll have some money, I hope, to have some money designated for at least a portion of the program within our CIP budget. I think striping is probably our first priority. Let me, we will address this in some way. Through the budget consideration, number one. Number two, I should mention that representatives from that committee have contacted city staff and have requested an opportunity to speak to the council on an agenda item. And so I've been giving some thought as to how that might occur. They did make a presentation before the commission. It may be possible to do a department report, for example, about that commission meeting, at which time they could then speak to the matter on the agenda in that form. It would be at the discretion of the mayor and the council as to how much time to allot them. They've indicated they'd like to have, I believe, a 14-minute presentation to the council on their objectives.
And we'll take a look at that on balance with any given night. Obviously, we've got the budget, a couple of those meetings coming up before us, and it obviously, it's great, we'd all probably love to hear something like that. But as far as something specific goes, if something comes out of the commission that comes onto the plan, I think we'd all be game to listen to it. I just, I don't know what, there's nothing to act on unless there's something to act on, is all I'm getting at. And then we can act, because these are balanced, when we do it on the, it would just see, does that preclude something else from happening, or simply we can add it on? If there's a budget number, we'll hear about that in a couple of weeks. That would be my two cents. Anything? You guys cool with that? You good with that? No motion on the floor? Christine?
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, we'll go to 10C, consideration of adopting cities' commission work plans for fiscal year 2008 and 2009. Mr. Moore?
Yes, thank you, mayor, and members of council. As you will observe, this is a new approach to working with our commissions. Council knows that in the past, we've had joint meetings, and there has been some concern from time to time about what the council's expectation, the commission's expectations are. So the staff members for each of these commissions prepared with the commission's assistance a series of five to seven key tasks for the coming fiscal year, which starts July 1st. We bring these before you tonight for comment, to see if you believe that these are on target for the things that you'd like the commission to work on. We have most of the department heads and key staff still here that staff these commissions, and I would probably refer you to them on specific questions for each commission. With that?
We'd like to first, Councilmember Grokot?
Sure. I'll go first. On all of these, I, the thing I looked at initially was just, how much do they have on their plate? And I was mindful of what we were told at strategic planning, that if you have more than three or four goals, you probably won't get anything done. If you have, keep it to something like three goals, you're likely to get those things done because you can be very focused. And I was a little troubled then, having done that, going through some of these and seeing that, you know, like, economic development, you know, they got six. Now, the thing I did, too, doing that exercise, is I took off task one, advisory body to the city council, because I forget, it's an ongoing thing. But when I looked at their big goals, some of these I thought were, there's a little too much there. So I just went through, and if I might, I just highlight the ones that I thought were, seemed important on these. For instance, on the Planning Commission, obviously, the general plan update, but that's something that's, as it comes up on their agenda, it's not something they're working on day in, day out, I don't think. Is that correct, Mr. Moore?
I think that's a fair statement.
Fair statement? So I looked at Grand Boulevard principles, code cleanup, and I saw that as task four and five being, you know, one's a subcategory, the other, and then this participation in focus groups regarding service and process. So I guess, bottom line, I was fine with that. The, on EDAC, the one thing I didn't understand, if I could get an explanation first, this Economic Development Project Review Criteria, a bunch of words, what's that mean?
My recollection of that particular one, and maybe Al may want to comment as well, is one of the commissioners has had a proposal in front of EDAC for some time that both the Planning Commission and council consider a numerical matrix when we bring development proposals to you. In other words, we talk about various projects and how they impact or move forward economic development principles. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, and also.
Could you? I know it's late.
Al Savay, Community Development Director, good evening. Yeah, one of the other issues was, when a new development comes in, what criteria is used to assess its financial impact on the city, either positively or negatively? Well, will it bring in property taxes, retail taxes, service issues, you know, how much will it cost? Will the people be spending money in the downtown? How much money will they be spending? So those were the other types of criteria that would be looked at as well. That's what they were.
So since you're in front of us, do you think, you know, having seven, well, actually, we could drop it down to six, because advisory body, you know, the advisory role they play to council is kind of a given. These six goals that they have, does it make, is it okay, in your opinion, that they have this many? Can they work, focus on this many, or?
It's a lot of work.
It is. Yeah, and your staff is.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, they really, you know, want to do all this, and I think that's all good to do, but perhaps this is a lot to take on in, you know, a six-month or a year. Maybe if they narrowed it down to the top three priorities, it would be, it would be helpful.
And so would you like to hear from us maybe what those top three are? Mr. Mayor?
These are not in priority order?
They are, I believe, in priority order. Yes, they are in order, I believe. And it would be good to hear from the council what they, what your thoughts are on that.
Okay. The three I marked were four, five, and six.
Sorry, to do or not to?
To do, yeah. I would just, you know, I would, obviously, keeping task one is fine, but then I looked at four, five, and six as being the, of course, that's without knowing what the last one was, but.
If you guys don't mind me jumping in, I actually thought the last one was perhaps one of the more important, from my standpoint. And that is something you can put onto.
Scorecard.
Quickly evaluate, and because in order to get to that scorecard, I think the committee has to help us define, what are those core, is it three, four, five, six things, which you say these are of maximum economic benefit, or you understand the implications of what the economic development might be. So I actually thought that one actually gets the body focused in a really good way, whereas for me, something like enhanced business recruitment package seems like something that staff should move forward, and they can certainly need to be a part of a response to, two cents.
Mayor Lewis, can I make a recommendation here? Because I can see we're going to start going into all of these.
Will everybody talk about them? What do you want to do?
And we, well, we do have a process set up where the liaison, so I'm with planning. I sat down with Alex and went through, and I asked him some questions, and, you know, kind of already settled with him, who got back to the Planning Commission, that this looks great. And even since it's their first year, I do agree, I think Matt makes a really good point. I think it's way too much in a lot of these areas. But since it's our first year, if they get half of it done, they got half of a list for next year. I mean, it's something, it's, I mean, it doesn't have to be, it's probably okay to be long, I'm what I'm saying, the first year. I think the main thing is that there's communication between council. I think if we try to do it, my concern is, as a group.
Could be a long night.
It will not, in a long time, it may not be as good versus, I hope you would trust that in planning, I would do a good job and let you do planning. And unless you see a real major red flag or something, I, you know, we'll go back to them, but that's, I don't know. I just, again, I think Matt makes a good point, but what's the best way to get through this and manage it?
Well, I'm not going to, my opinion, we're not going to have enough time to go over every single one of every single one. We can't postpone it, so we either have, we sort of have to look at it, what they, I mean, everyone else has four, I guess there's five for transportation and circulation, and so for youth advisory. But one of those is advisory body, and actually, most of these have advisory body in there. So the only one that's really, to me, is economic development, and I think they do have too many, whether we want to just go back and say, cut it, approve all the rest and not that one, or I don't know. Right, so maybe as council goes through this, if we look at them, if you felt like something was low in priority, you think should move up, and I think Matt makes, I think everybody agrees, Matt's making a salient point, if you have too much on your list, we encourage you to cut it back so it's achievable. I know, as a former commission member, I appreciate achievable results within a year so you could focus the agendas on any given meeting. Randy, fortunately, Matt didn't pick on planning, so you must have done a nice job on that. But, you know, Randy, again, we're liaisons, so if we see something, and we have a little discussion tonight, the liaison should maybe take it back to the chair and with staff.
So, sure, I'll just continue on then.
Why don't we give the, try to give the headlines of things that you may have a concern about, and try to keep things moving.
Sure. Well, then, I'll move on to, I'm just going to jump down to transportation and circulation. On task two, I thought that that actually should be modify, improve, amend, and complete bicycle and pedestrian transportation plan, not just a bicycle plan.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I don't really see much importance right now to task four, which is improve communication and education of San Carlos community on the transportation. And quite frankly, some of the cities tried to get funding for that from BPAC, from the county BPAC, and those were all really low-priority projects, and they didn't get any funding because we'd rather see, you know, pavement on the ground and that sort of thing, real projects. But task five, I think, works in with what we were talking about earlier, the Safe Rats to Score, so I think it's a good, good task. Dropping down to arts and culture, I think we got an issue here with task two, which is promote public art in San Carlos, because we're going to get into, that was something in the 2005 council, was in favor of, we have a different council. One of the things we're going to have to look at is, when you start promoting public art, is to some people, art is art, and to other people, art is not art. They're not, they don't really like it. And so how do you set the criteria for what the public is going to buy and then put in the public arena? So.
I was just going to comment on that, and I think maybe Barry wants to amplify. I think in the past, we've actually budgeted like $800 in that budget, and they typically buy one work of art at a fine arts festival if they think one's worthy, and if not, they don't.
For $800? It's not going to be a public piece.
Hook up the one that works there. There's actually two things. One is, they do have a little bit of money in the budget to buy art, but the public art plan that Councilmember Grokot is talking about, it's actually a council-adoption policy, basically is a citizens' review, so that it, because you're right, art to one is, you know, not art to another person. know, not art to another person, and so rather than have a person or even a body pick that, they, it's kind of a citizens' review, and that's basically what the policy says. So, it does get vetted with the community.
All right. The, the only other thing on this particular commission is, I know years ago, we took history out of it, I, I didn't agree with it at the time, and, and I think it is, I suppose maybe that's the task one, this liaison deal, but who in our community oversees the safekeeping of our city's history, and that, you know...
Who oversees that, that keeping of what?
Oversees the keeping of our city's history and the policies that we need surrounding that, what we keep, what we throw away, how we maintain it, and so forth. Maybe Randy, having been on this, has an opinion on this, but I, I just think it, you know, we need, as a city, we want to have, if nothing else, a photo album of who we were and where we've been. We get some of that with the, with the art museum, or, excuse me, the history museum, but I, I just think it's important for this commission to still have that charge of...
So, would you like to, excuse me, would you like to add something to this?
So, they have a liaison role with the museum.
So, if we have a liaison role with the museum, I think that's the answer.
Should I say?
Yeah, and the museum's pretty active in, in continuing to collect, or to collect a little bit, but most importantly, to protect archival and show, you know, historical pieces and photographs and books and so forth.
So, again, I, I appreciate the extended conversation on history, it's five to eleven, and I'm wanting to keep things moving along here, so...
That's it.
Point well taken. If you want to add a task, let's try to bring it up, as, I'd like to see a task added. So, you good? Councilmember Grocott? Okay. Councilmember Royce? Okay.
I just had one question, that San Carlos Green is not listed on this, is that...
These are council-appointed commissions. San Carlos Green's a task force.
Well, yeah, actually, San Carlos Green is, is technically a citizens' group now, they're not appointed by the city, and, and I'm technically their liaison for, similar to what Barry is doing with the Building Community Group, which, again, is, was a spinout of the enhancing the city.
Okay. Thank you. Um, do you, how about some of the other tasks to support? Vice Mayor Grisilli?
I, the only one is economic development, that's the only one I've, I've got some points, I mean, figure we'll work on that one.
The, one thing, and this is a small task, and, and I don't want to add anything, given Councilmember Grocott's point, because I think that's well said, but I actually thought there's some sort of general plan review that they should all be doing this year along the way, and, and that should be on everybody's radar, because this is the year we're culminating that plan, and every one of these groups should get a pass at that, and you should vet those values. There are volunteer commissions that should be the most on top of those issues. So, I was gonna say, again, it's a, perhaps it's not a year-long, huge amount of time, but I'd like to see review and general plan as a task on, under every one of these commissions. Planning Commission, maybe that goes without saying, but not the others. So, that was one, one thought I had. The Park and Rec Commission, and again, this is maybe just a question for Barry, there's nothing on here that says, you know, interacting with the Park and Rec Foundation, and I don't know how those two bodies are due to interact, but it felt like that's sort of ominously missing in a way, do you know what I mean? That there should, is, maybe you can educate me on how they interact.
Actually, it's to maintain the integrity of the perception, that you want to keep the foundation separate from a political body.
Mm-hmm. I, I do understand that, I guess, my question is, so is there zero interaction, or do we have a liaison, or is it all through you?
At this point, there's zero interaction.
Right, and I understand they're individual 501(c), and that's part of the objective design, it's so the money can go there.
And I serve as the liaison to both the foundation and support staff for the commission.
Okay. And then my last question is, I felt like, and again, maybe this is an ongoing thing, but for both Park and Rec Commission, as well as Arts and Culture Commission, the pursuance of grants, I know staff does it, but a lot of our volunteers on these commissions have good connections and good energy, and it's a thing that they can do in their kind of spare time, and both of these departments are underfunded, and so, I thought, and, and maybe one of these tasks where one of the members is sort of keeping up on grants or looking into fundraising, especially with Arts and Culture, I would say we have zero public art, and I would love to have the argument, because an eight hundred dollars a year, I know it's not gonna get it done, and I know we don't have more money, but perhaps there could be some grant funding for art, and I, I'd love to see us have the discussion. San Carlos really has little to none, so I would encourage some fundraising in that aspect, see if we can get some money up, and what we can get, what we can get in front of people to argue about.
And so, would you add that to the two bodies, or would you replace?
My, you know, I don't know if it's actually a task as to, when I see it not on a work program at all, I think grant research, other than just staff, should be an element that commission can help, uh, staff with.
You make a good point about both these commissions probably have some expertise there.
I think they do, and they've got a ton of energy, so we should take advantage of it. Yeah. Are there, any other items in this issue? Okay, so we will, do we have a motion to interrupt this as amended?
Yes, I apologize, I, I don't know what we did for economic develop, EDAC, I apologize. What did we do?
All right, to my knowledge, if, was there agreement that we move up the Economic Development Project Review Criteria?
Yeah.
Was there not consensus, okay?
Yep.
Excuse me, Councilmember Grocott, is there consensus that we'd move up that last item on the criteria, on that priority list? And then, did we want, what was, did, Councilmember Grocott, was there something you suggested coming off the list? Let's see if we have consent on that.
Well, I didn't have community communication plan on the list.
So, task number three would maybe be taken off the list? I see a nodding. Uh, Director Seve?
Let me, let me chair. I mean, it's difficult for us at, at this point, without relating that there are several different folks working on these tasks. There's an Economic Development Advisory Commission, there's also an Economic Development Partnership, and, and then, you know, staff would also want to chime in, in terms of priorities as well, and, and I wouldn't want to lose sight of the, the Economic Development Plan and updating that on an annual basis, so that it is truly a working document that, that works with goals and objectives as well. The, you know, the communication plan, I think, is probably at least partially there, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Al, but, you know, with consideration for utility tax, we've talked with the EDAC, we've, we've talked with the partnership, and, and have expressed the, the city's financial condition to them, from our perspective, and they've indicated that, you know, there needs to be a more active role in getting that word out. And so, that's, I think, at least one of the reasons why it ends up being on, on the list.
Okay, let me suggest something. After the late innings relief appearance of city manager for EDAC, what I would say is, we, we've given some feedback on this one, and we'll, with council's consensus, we'll say, those would be, that would be our advice to use, to watch the number of things on there, we've given you some sense of priority, there's one task that I think we're sort of feeling like could be bottom of the list, one that should come up. Is council comfortable with that being the advice?
Yeah, I agree with that.
In that respect?
And with other amendments stated by consensus, do I have a motion? To accept?
So moved.
Second. Christine?
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Yes, we have a time issue.
Through the chair. My clock is a little slower than that, so I've got eleven oh one, like I make a motion that we go to eleven fifteen.
All right, I think, what we have left are the...
Consent items.
Consent calendar items.
Is there a second to my motion?
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any other discussion on that for tonight? Let's keep it to fifteen minutes, my two cents would be, I've got a long day tomorrow, so if we can do this in fifteen, I'm in. If it goes beyond fifteen, I'd like to table it to the next meeting, unless staff thinks something's gonna be an undue problem. So, with that, can we have, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Problem, excuse me, through the chair, problem with the next meeting is, we're not gonna have any, we have the budget, so just, anyway.
I understand if staff feels okay with it. I feel okay with it, yeah.
I have a suggestion then.
Yes, sir.
You're suggesting tailoring some items.
I would suggest that we go over fifteen minutes.
I, I understand. Items H, I, and J, to me, are, the issue I have with them is how they're reported, and, and they could actually be cleared up at the budget hearing, because on each of these items, and I'll just use the first one for, for an example, if you turn to six H, fiscal implications, it's talking about, um, that it, the money's available in the budget, an additional forty-seven thousand five hundred out of Fund Twenty-Five is required, and, and, but it doesn't say afterwards, okay, if we take that forty-seven five out of Fund Twenty-Five, what's remaining? And if you turn to six I, you've got a, it's the same thing. We're taking money out of the capital improvement budget for this project, the two thousand eight, two thousand nine, what's remain, what's left? What do we have left in that fund? And then finally, with item J, same thing, we, we're told, this is the money you're taking out, money's in the budget for it, so forth, but we don't get a balance to the checkbook. So, that was my issue with each of one of those, that's why I pulled it. I apologize for not being able to call and, and discuss those, these kind of things with staff, but I had a project that I turned in yesterday with my work, and I had taxes today, so...
Okay, I understand those issues, but you know what I'd like to do, let's just try to knock this back in fifteen minutes. Can we just go to six F? Let's just move forward, we, we understand you've got an overall issue with those three, let's see if we can get to that. But let's start with six F, which is the first one that we, and the recommendation is, can you tell us, tell us why you pulled it, and then we'll...
Sure, I pulled it because, number one, I just want to make the point that I, I, for one, did not appreciate an ad going out that said we would pay so much a month for a city engineer, public works director. This is a position that's been filled by a consultant for the last, I don't know, seven, eight years, and so there was no classification for it, no salary associated with it. Usually when we do these things, we give a range within which the city manager can go out and recruit and hire, and that had not been approved ahead of time, and yet, an ad went out with a very firm number, and I would have rather seen some statement that, you know, competitive compensation, or something like that. As it is, we've given a number, and that backs us right into a corner when it comes to negotiating. Then, when I looked at the, you know, the salary survey, I, I don't really agree with the salary survey, there's cities in here, I, I realize that, I guess there's some MOU that's, that's used. I dropped a lot of these cities, I actually went to the other report we had here about, I forget which item it was, I think nine A, anyways, which, there was an item in here which had a list of cities, yeah, yeah, was the one with the FTEs that we were talking about. And so, I pulled out those cities, Berlingame, Belmont, Foster City, Menlo Park, Los Altos, and you just look at those, and you've got an average of about thirteen-four, you know, monthly salary. If you go to the median, it would be thirteen-eight, so you're talking about a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars a year as a top tier for this position. My opinion, let's go out and advertise with something, some figure like that, if it doesn't work, if we don't get any respondents, then, fine, we, we, we go back out. But, uh, the figure that was given, I think was seventeen thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars a month, that was what was in the advertisement, something like that.
The report indicates fourteen-two-seven-three.
Fourteen-two-seven-three?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Which, even that is above what is shown here as the average, so, I don't know, I just, that's where I'm going with this, I...
I hear you. Other comment, council? On that item?
Yep.
Um, I do, you know, I agree with you that it would have been nice if we, A, had a range, and B, talked about it first.
Mm-hmm.
That being said, I know we're trying to move as quickly as possible because of the situation we're in, with the public works director.
I fully take responsibility for having made that decision, and I did it because of the pending conclusion of Mr. McTary's contract in June. We've got a number of projects, we've listed those projects within the report, I felt it was necessary to get someone on board as quickly as possible, so we used a standard process we've used for every other position in the city in determining what that salary range would be.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Make a motion to approve six F.
Second.
Councilmember Member Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. Item number six G, Councilmember Grocott, if you could, let us know why you pulled that.
This is also looking at salary positions for positions that have been contracted out previously, and the reason I pulled this one is, unlike the previous one, which gave us a survey to at least show us how these positions are paid in other cities, this provided us none. I have no idea how to, uh, go out and pay a, what the report called entry-level position for a planner, or journeyman position for a planner, but if you, if you run these figures out, you're talking about eighty-five thousand dollars for a year for someone who's potentially fresh out of school, fresh out of college, and ninety-three thousand for what's called a journeyman. I have no idea if that's the market or not, because there's nothing in here that gives us any indication. To me, those sound like rather high numbers, especially for the entry level, eighty-five thousand dollars for an entry-level position seems rather high, but...
Typically, we haven't provided all the backup survey data to council. We did so in terms of the public works director, Councilmember Grocott, because you had communicated that you had some specific questions about that, so we were trying to provide that information in the future. I'd be happy to attach all the survey data to these types of staff reports, that's not a problem. The methodology that we used to determine those two particular salaries, in one instance, it's the, an assistant planner category, in the second instance, the journey-level position, typically referred to as an associate planner. We use the same fifteen cities that we use for all city positions, covered in the MOU, so we go back to those cities, and we use a service called Berry ERS, one out of Santa Clara County, that houses all the survey data from other cities. We pull down the, the salary, monthly salary, and all the total compensation data, and what we do is, we look at the total comp column, which is the column on the far right-hand side, and we determine what the median, what the fifty percentile, right in the middle, salary would be. So, in some cases, the salary itself may be higher than the fiftieth percentile in just the salary column, but when you add up the total value of the benefits, it's right at the fiftieth percentile. We did that in these two cases, as we would with, with any other city positions. If these positions already existed in the city, and you were, say, doing an equity adjustment per contract, it would be, it would have come out exactly as, as we provided.
And is it so, so if you had an applicant with less experience, it wouldn't be the top step of the salary?
Well, that would be a consideration for the director and, and the city manager, but typically, yep, it's fresh out of school.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I do have a question, we're looking at appendix A, and it gives all these other positions, we're just talking about the two positions there, is that correct? We're not making changes to these other positions?
That's just a full schedule, and you're only changing the, the schedule as it applies to those two positions, there are no other changes incorporated.
Okay.
Fine.
Motion on this item?
So moved.
Second.
Christine?
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. And then, Councilmember Grocott, on H through J, you had a central issue with those three items being not knowing the remaining balance. Is that it?
That's right.
Okay.
It's difficult to make a decision on these things, granted, some of these, we, like the traffic signal, you know, we already gave staff direction to go ahead with those things, but when we get these reports, and it gives us fiscal implications, it'd just be nice to, yeah, even though it's in the budget, how much is left, how much, what are, maybe some things we're looking at next year, and where are we gonna get the money with what's left? We're doing the strategic planning, and, and we give direction at a strategic plan to go forward with these projects. It'd be nice to have a bigger picture of, you know, just because we sat in a room and had a retreat and said, yeah, go do this, we're not doing that with the checkbook in front of us. When you come back to us, it'd be nice to be able to see, yeah, we're gonna spend this,[1785.25] this, we've got a budget for it, but how much change do we have left in our pocket after we've done that? And looking in the next year, some things that staff sees coming up, other paving projects, whatever it is, in my opinion, it'd be nice to see some of that. And anything that we put on the strategic plan, I think there's a little bit more time than rushing through at 11:15, and because it's been put on the consent calendar, we have to pull it. The... We have a few levers up here, and one of the levers, major levers, we have is budget, how we spend our money. We're spending the public's money. And I don't like, for one, council member, I don't like rushing through that, and I don't like having little information when I'm making decisions on how we spend the public's money.